Good afternoon. I'd like to bring the regular meeting of the Township and Land Council, the regular afternoon meeting of the Township and Land Council to order. And the first item is adoption of C. the agenda items. And I would ask, prior to taking the motion, that we move D. one, which is the presentation of staff, to after I, other business, in order to allow, we'll get through our business and we'll get into the, uh...
I'll move that.
Okay, thank you. And seconded by, moved by Counselor Fox and seconded by Counselor Arnison. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posse carried. And just for information, delegate, our delegation's been asked to attend at two, so. And a motion to adopt the minutes of the council meeting on June 26th, the afternoon council meeting. Counselor Fox, seconded by Counselor Qualley. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Posse carried. And a motion to resolve the special closed for the items on the agenda and on table. And kind of, okay, I'll get the motion, I'll get the motion on the table first, so. Long moves, Fox seconds, Counselor Fox.
I have a property issue and a legal issue.
Okay, Fox. Property. Okay, seen what, none others with that, I'll call...
It's kind of funny that the motion on table is actually on the...
Sorry, website, so I don't know how secret it is. Part of the discussion problem. Anyway, call the question. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Posse carried, as now we're going to close. Thank you. I think I'll now bring the meeting to order, just Counselor, Counselors back, missing one, we'll get started. Okay. Thanks. Okay, so now reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of the Township and Land Council. The next item, we did move through the agenda approval process, D. one, to the end of the meeting, so we're going to move directly to delegations. And the delegation today is Lorraine Camerad. If, please come forward, and so turn your mic on, and you have five minutes to present. You'll see the lights flashing and all that wonderful stuff. And if you please provide your name, you don't have to touch anything, it's on, just provide your name and where you live for the clerk, and once that's done, I'll start the timer.
Thank you. My name is Lorraine Camerad, and I live at 7760 211 Street in Langley. So, on June 24th, I had come into this office downstairs to pay my property taxes. I had previously torn the bottom portion off with a check, which now I recall was post-dated for the first, and I put it in the box with the recommendation of the lady who was at the desk, because the line was quite long. I've done this previously, I put it in there and I left. It was some weeks later that I received a letter from the township that I owed $483.58 in interest for not paying that bill. I was quite shocked. I, of course, then went back to the office, and I believe it was Darlene Fox-Gord that I spoke to at that time, and explained, I made the payment in the box, and she says, well, we will go through everything, and we'll get back to you. Some days went by, I had checked, never heard anything, they said they're going through all the, all the papers, that they had everything, they were going through everything to look for my check, and it was a process, they'll, I'll hear back shortly. Another week goes by, another week goes by, I've kept coming back asking if they found my check. Then they finally said, no, and I said, well, I made that payment, I'm not giving up on this. And so, of course, I was told, do you have a receipt? Which I didn't. I then ended up speaking to Karen at some point, and also Kim Kenward. I continued to try to find out why there was no record of this check anywhere and how it could get lost. I asked for video surveillance to be looked at, and they told me, because of the timeframe of them to look through the garbage, the video surveillance has now been deleted. I trusted that check to pay my taxes, and I finally wrote the letter to Mayor Fros, and I pleaded my case. It, I don't know if you've seen that letter, I do apologize for the mistype, it was June 24th that I came in, and I got kind of a too bad, so sad kind of a response, because I had no proof. It wasn't until last week or week before that I came in to pay my taxes for this year, and it has bothered me all year that I had to pay that interest. And I went into the office, I stood in line, the lady at the desk said, at the box said, would you like to pay it in the box? I can stamp. I said, no, because I have, I need a receipt, she goes, I can't give you one, you'll have to stand in line, but if you have your ripped paper, I can stamp it and you can go. Well, I didn't, I only had the portion that I needed, I thought, and I was, so I stood in line. When I got to the front of the line, the lady took my check, she checked, everything looked fine, it was also post-dated for the first, and she said, thank you, that's all you need. And I said, no, I need a receipt. And she said, I'm sorry, I can't give you a receipt. I said, oh, I'm not leaving here without a receipt. And she said, because it's post-dated, we cannot give you a receipt. And I said, really? So, she said, the only way you can have a receipt is if you change the date to today. So, I paid my taxes early this year, I changed the date, I'd initialled it, and I left. When I got to my car, I thought, this is crazy. This is, it could have happened, they told me it was impossible for them to lose a check. Human error, I don't know, I paid the check, this office lost it. And now again, I was really bothered, so I went back into the office, I said, how do I get a meeting with the mayor? And they asked me to come upstairs, of which I sent, set the appointment for this, this meeting here. I would really like to have my $483.58 returned to me. I pay my bills on time, I pay all my bills on time, and if I don't ever, or won't ever pay a bill on time, I'd be happy to pay the interest. But this is hard work money. I own an office here in Langley, and I pay a lot of taxes to the city, I would like to have this returned. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, I appreciate you bringing this before our council, because I think the advice was, I can't do anything about it, it needs to come before the entire council. So I do appreciate you taking the time to, to come and speak to all of council. I have a couple of questions, and I do, I have looked into your issue, this is, isn't new to me, and I did talk to Ms. Sinclair at length about it, and I know that staff did turn a lot of things upside down looking for that check, and unfortunately, didn't find it. And a couple of things that you're probably already aware of, but I'm just going to repeat, is that, first of all, there's legislative requirements that we have, it's a very difficult time for council to refund, and to go back once the date's been passed, just saying that, but I'm going to try and get to some solutions here. So that is a legislative requirement, and we have to be very careful, because if we do it two-on, all of a sudden we get a lineup of people saying, hey, I paid and you lost my check.
I totally get that.
So, long as you get that.
I thought that was probably part of the problem.
Yeah, there's some legislative requirements there. The other one, and about, just on an aside, giving a receipt on a post-dated check, because that's not considered legal currency at that point, because it's post-dated, we can't give a receipt, so I hopefully understand that, but obviously, you found a way through. So when speaking to Ms. Clare, we discussed this, and I'm glad you came and had a few questions for you, and I don't know if that's been brought to attention before, and I think what the ultimate result of this will be, I will ask staff, you know, at the end of this and other business, to maybe we'll refer your comments back to staff to look at some solutions, but it would be helpful if, number one, if you write your checks, if you keep a checkbook, and within the checkbook, you can, it lists, I don't know if you do that, some people do, some people don't, list the checks that you write, and then bringing the council checks that were returned, you know, the ones before and the ones after, that kind of helps to corroborate your story. There's, hard to get evidence, but it certainly helps to corroborate. And I know from my discussions, staff are very, in a difficult position because of the legislation, however, council, once, you know, we can have staff report back to us with their findings and working with you, we could then make a decision. The other, I know you asked for, for video surveillance, and I asked the same question, and, but with the time lapse, the video surveillance goes through, I guess it automatically deletes after so many days, so then it refreshes the tape, however, I think staff are going to be looking into making some changes based on your story. You know, it's an unfortunate situation, and I hope there's something that can happen, but if we had some corroborating evidence, I suppose, it's not really evidence, but it certainly helps corroborate your story, that would be helpful. I don't know if that's something that you can present.
When I was here, I did ask what, what I could do to help. They asked me for my check number, which I gave to them, and unfortunately, I do have, this comes out of my line of credit, my mortgage line of credit, and I only use it for bigger items, and I have a couple of checkbooks, I keep one in my office, I keep one at my house. So I did give them the check number from the office, I never was asked to do a follow-up check, or, you know, the before and after, but I would obviously, I can look that and see what numbers are coming up.
See what you have, and...
Yeah, for sure, because I had asked how, what can I do, what can I present, but that was never asked. So I did give them the check number of, of the check that I wrote, so.
Okay, and so I'm sure I covered everything. So with that, Counselor Richter had some comments or questions. Counselor Richter?
Thank you very much for coming in, and do you know, I had the same problem this year, and I've paid my taxes here faithfully for 30-plus years, and this year I went in with a post-dated check, and they wouldn't stamp it, and they wouldn't give me credit for handing it in, so I had to re-date the check, but that's the first time it ever happened to me. So my question to you is, last year, did you pay it here in this building?
I put it in the box.
In the box.
In the, yeah.
And they didn't stamp the little, they didn't initial it or anything like that?
No, because I didn't have, it was already, the, the part was, portion was taken off, the check was written, it was in an envelope, so while I was standing there, I ripped off the, the sticker liner, and I closed it, and I put it in the box, and I left, and I just assumed that was my payment.
Okay, so that was your, like, your homeowner's grant statement?
Correct, everything was signed, and I put it in the box.
Signed that and your check.
As instructed, from the lady in the, in the...
Now, did they ever get your assigned homeowner's thing? Did they ever?
They, I've never, I never got any response back from that, but they were looking for anything from my envelope, and they said they didn't find my envelope, they didn't find my check, it's gone. And I understand you guys have a really good system, I'm sure, but I know I put that check in the box, so there's something wrong with your system.
Okay, and that check never cleared your account?
Never cleared, nope, that was the first thing I checked. When I opened my mail that day and I had interest, first thing I checked was...
Did the check go through?
When did that check clear? And then, it wasn't even there.
Okay. Yeah, there's something in, in the video surveillance, like you would think, tax time, there should be video surveillance, yeah.
The day they told me that they finally finished all of their checking, I asked for video surveillance. So that timeframe that they took to do their homework, basically blew it for me.
And how long was that?
Weeks, it was weeks.
Weeks.
Yeah, I came back week after week, asking, do you have it? Did you find anything? Can you give me an update? And all they'd just say, we're still looking, we're still looking, we'll let you know, we'll let you know.
So did you subsequently pay the...
Yes, when I came in that day, she said, if you don't, you have to make a payment of your taxes, but I, so what I did is I paid the taxes, but not the interest.
Okay.
And that was the day I came in, after I got the letter. Then they said, if you don't pay the interest by December, whatever that date was, then I was going to be charged again. So I came in on that day, and I had to pay my, that's when I, I was fighting it the whole time, and I ended up having to pay on that deadline, for my taxes of four. So I have a second check payment for $483.58 to you, to cover the interest.
Thank you very much for coming to us, because I think you've identified some issues we need to look into, absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you very much for coming, it does sound like we need to review our protocols and see what can be done, because I think it's rather commonplace to give a post-dated check for something like that, and I once got a check lost in an ATM, which was interesting, and I can only blame my husband, he put the envelope in without sticking it down, you know, the adhesive, and he just didn't bother. So a check just was in the box, and it just didn't get found for quite some time. Eventually, you know, I was given credit for it, because I guess they had to do some scrupulous investigation to find out where it was. But yeah, I, I think that that's something, you know, we should look at, because out of fairness to people, we don't want to create these administrative problems that you have to take a lot of time and aggravation to try and sort out. So thank you for coming.
And a lot of time.
Thanks. So we will look into that, but I do want to say, you know, in support of our staff, is that we have about 35,000 households, and...
I understand.
Very, very rare, I mean, you're the first that has come, and we've had others that have had stories, whatever, and, you know, we've, because of our legislation, we're pretty bound, but yours seems a little more unique, but we have 35,000 households.
And I honestly...
And they did, they really worked hard, but yeah, a few things I would point out...
I get you do a job, good job, and I felt that I was going to be looked at as somebody who paid late and trying to get out of taxes, but you need to understand, I made that payment.
By coming to council, at least, we can then forward it back to staff, they can come back with a memo, so. And I have paid that penalty in the past, I know it hurts, but then I knew I forgot, so it was one of those things.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll deal with that and other business. Next item is reports to council, F. one, synthetic turf fields at Walnut Grove and Noel Booth Parks, could I have a motion, please?
No.
Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Fox, or Counselor Whitmarsh?
Motion.
Okay.
Allow seconded then.
So the motions, yeah, okay, so this motion's on the floor, so if you want to make an amendment?
I would like to, I would like to, if I could, move the optional recommendation that council authorize staff proceed. Walnut Grove...
Oh, sorry, did, no, I go, sorry, your mic is on now, if you want to start over again, I...
I would like to move the optional recommendation, or alternative number one, that council authorize staff to proceed with the Walnut Grove Community Park synthetic turf field, utilizing the 2017 budget funds and defer Noel Booth to the 2018 parks' capital budget. I assume of.
Yeah, so that would be, like, an amendment, or should we, now, is mending the language to, basically, to this one?
My interpretation would be that was a whole new motion, there's many changes in that?
Yeah, okay, so now we've taken one on the, there's one on the floor now, so we have to deal with that one.
Okay.
So we'll deal with the one that's on the floor then. And Counselor Long?
Okay, I, I didn't even consider the alternate one, because the first thing that hit me was, is, this is just, this is allotment of DCCs, and monies, the monies are there for DCC work, so this is not money out of our budget, is it? No, this is DCC's money, that, DCC money that's being redirected to worthwhile projects, so I can't see a problem with that, but I'd like to, maybe, we could have some more discussion as to why that may not be a good idea.
So, I don't see another discussion, I'm going to support this, however this fails, and the alternate comes on, I'll support that one too, so I think they're both, they're both worthy of support. The money is coming from DCCs, Mr. Winsley, that's correct?
That's correct, your worship. Park DCCs.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, this is the second item that we've had in the last couple of weeks, that's gone substantially over budget, from what we put into the, the approved budget, and I'm just wondering why this happened? Are we dealing with Americans again?
What do you mean, Americans? Oh, you mean American suppliers, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, because the last one was because we were dealing with Americans.
I don't think this is, Mr., Mr. Winsley can maybe explain, but I don't think this is because of a change, this is moving up some synthetic turf fields.
Your worship, the companies that have responded to the tender are all Canadian companies, however, some of the materials do come from different parts of the world, including the United States. I know the turf itself, a portion of this rises due to the, the Canadian versus US dollar.
If I could just clarify, the increase is to do with adding another field, it's not to do with increased costs, is that correct?
Your worship, both fields were planned to be done, this is something where it's just come back at increased costs, as opposed to what's officially projected.
That's right, it's projected, okay, I understand, thanks.
Okay, but now is this happening for other municipalities, or are we just getting the hit on this?
Your worship, I'm not sure we have the comparison available. The most recent example we have is the artificial turf field that was done by, at Yorkson Community Park, by the middle school, these costs are up slightly from, from that.
Thank you. Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you, worship. I have two questions, so the first one, through your worship, I think, to, well, I'm not sure who on staff exactly, but I, I know that this had, had been planned in the past, but I'm wondering, since we are generating some amenity charges from Brookswood, whether or not any or all of these funds could be attributed towards the cost of the fields in Noel Booth for the, for the turf installation? So that's the first question.
Your worship, would the suggestion be, we utilize, I believe, looking to Karen for support, Ms. Sinclair, I believe the funds that we're attributing are only for Willoughby, I believe it's the Willoughby Fund, right?
Right, with this, these two parks being DCC eligible, I don't think we'd want to use that other source, we'd want to use the DCCs.
Okay, and my second question then has to do with just the apportionment of grass and turf fields, so I just want to make sure, I've heard in the past that there was a concern that we have the right balance, because some players prefer to play on grass fields, but I know that this is a, a bit of a situation where we weigh imbalance, so just staff's perception of, of the balance.
Thank you, your worship. I do recall when the original information came forward as part of the budget, staff did do an analysis of that balance, because we'd received some correspondence, and it was felt that both of these locations are, are primed for artificial turf field as opposed to grass.
Okay, thank you.
Long?
Your worship, there's a contingency built into this, is there a chance that some of that will not be expended, so in other words, that some money could go back into the DCC program, the unfunded account?
Correct, your worship, there's a 5% contingency built into these numbers, referenced in the report, and if that was unexpended, it would just remain in the park DCC fund.
Well, your worship, I just want to support this, because, just want to point out, of course, it's in the report, $350,000 for each field has been put in by, by the user groups, so I mean, they're putting that kind of money on the table, I think we need to support the project, and I haven't heard of any abundance of fields that can wait, so the sooner we get fields built, the sooner kids can play on them, so anyway, I'm quite happy to support the motion as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, through your worship to staff, and just, could you just clarify, beyond the, the turf itself, if there's, what kind of work is done around benches, or team areas, or sidewalks along, or fencing along these fields, or is it, is that the cost of this, the turf itself?
Your worship, the, these prices referenced contain two components, one is civil, which is mostly drainage and land preparation, the other is the supply and installation of the turf. In this specific instance, because both of these are going into existing park locations, I don't believe there's any upgrades planned beyond that, as far as pathways, or benches, or anything, because they're, they're already there, or they can be added later if determined.
Right, okay, so I guess, I guess my question was specifically related to the turf, though, like, lots of, lots of turf fields have, you know, fencing around the field itself, or have team benches that are put on the, against the turf, and so I was wondering if these are just open turf fields, or if they're sort of contained in some, some way or not?
Great, excellent question, yeah, unfortunately, I don't think we have the staff here who have the level of detail to know what's included.
All right, okay, thank you. Counselor Fox?
Thank you. Well, I think it's fair to say that this community is a leader in transforming gravel fields into artificial turf fields. We did an outstanding job in, in Walnut Grove, and actually, because we were a leader, we got a really, really good deal. Obviously, costs have gone up substantially, and that doesn't bode well. We're at July, the seventh month of 2017, this project is not going to get going much and be usable much before 2018 anyway. So if we say, okay, in 2018, this comes out of the 2018 budget, as a, as a capital item, then, in all fairness, we could probably dovetail these two particular projects very close together. And so I think that we are responding to the user group's desires, the outcome will be awesome when we get two more fields that are artificial turf, because the usage factor can go up substantially for our youth soccer groups, male and female. And so I don't have any difficulty with saying, okay, let's do one this year out of this year's budget, and do one out of next year's budget, and we can expedite in the pre-approvals, the, possibly through, as we've do, do in the past, have done in the past, the pre-approvals for the Noel Booth synthetic field, turf field, and it can be probably usable by, within a year, maybe 14 months, so we're not missing out much, I think, but I think it looks better substantially, we've been budget properly, so that's the price you pay.
Thank you. Counselor Qualley?
Thank you, I understand Counselor Fox's point, but I think if the money's sitting there in DCCs, in parks' DCCs, it doesn't really matter if it's used this year or next. My question, I guess, to you, Mr. Winsley, through Mayor Fros, we had an arrangement with the user groups who were paying the $350,000, because they had contributed a percentage of the field costs, those arrangements stay in place as they were agreed with that original contribution, correct?
Your worship, there was a, an agreement for $350,000 per field, I believe the timing would not affect that arrangement, if it was this year or next year, they would still support Noel Booth, however, that discussion would have to take place, obviously.
Okay, so the user groups are expecting that this will move forward, but I guess my question was, because the percentage they've contributed now is lower, although the dollar amount is still the same, the percentage of the project cost is lower, I just, I'm curious if it has any impact on their accessibility and their use of those fields now?
That is an excellent question, your worship. I don't believe staff necessarily consider that, however, often their financial contributions are tied to an additional levy against their members, I'm not, I don't believe they would be looking to increase that, however, that's something we can pass on to staff to take a look at, as far as hours allocated to them, and how, what would result?
I wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to affect them adversely, I guess, was my comment, not that I want to change the arrangement, but because it's a different percentage, and we looked at it based on that percentage when we made the investment, I, I don't know if that's even a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think staff would look to adversely affect the user group as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Richter?
I'm really concerned about this. This increase represents 53.6% higher than what was budgeted. Now, it says in the report, it's due to the rising US dollar, but the US dollar is not 53.6% higher than the Canadian dollar. And I appreciate what Counselor Fox said, that we're leaders, but maybe as leaders, we need to signal that we're not going to accept this type of highway robbery, because that's what it is. And I, I really think that we should just say no, and re-tender, and if it doesn't go through, wait for another year. Because this throws our entire budget completely out of whack. Instances like this, and this is one example, there was another example, as I mentioned earlier on another item, but we've got to just put our foot down and say, no, we, we can't afford a 50% increase in what we've budgeted, simply because of the quote US dollar. And if, if it's going to be that high, then we're just not going to do it.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we should re-tender the whole thing.
Thank you. Okay, so Counselor Long, you've spoken twice already, so I'll wrap it up. One thing I have noticed, in picking up grandchildren from the parks, is they're extremely well-used, our areas are growing, and all-weather turf field multiplies use by at least four in multiple sports, and they're, they're very well-used, that's just one thing. Prices don't go down generally, when you wait longer. As Counselor Fox, I agree, if, like I say, if this doesn't pass, in this instance, I certainly will support the next one, because all-weather turf fields serve our community, and they're overused at this point. A great community amenity, our community's growing, I think we need to do this sooner than later, so I'll support it. So with that, I'm going to call the question, and it's F. one. And it carries with Counselor Richter and Counselor Fox opposed. So move to G. one, this is a recent, of course, ordinance, some UBCM resolutions for receipt, could I have a motion, please? Counselor Arnison, seconded, Counselor, sorry, did I say second? Counselor Qualley? Okay, and Counselor Fox?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I did talk to Mayor Cotte about these recently, because I needed a little bit of an explanation as to exactly what, what was happening here. Under the first mess, first item, City of New Westminster Resolution there, I did emphasize with Mayor Cotte, that the university, the UBCM urges the provincial government to work collaboratively with the federal government to place an equal emphasis on homeless prevention and crisis response, based upon, and I, this is my inclusivity, based on the Metro Vancouver framework established by the Metro Vancouver Homeless Task Force to increase funding for housing outreach. I've referred to that... I've referred to that framework before in this, at this council chambers. I think it's a very valid and functional framework and it's all-encompassing. Mayor Cotte did not have any difficulty with that. I don't know if we want to just add that as an addendum. I don't think we want to revise the motion, but as an understood, I think that maybe an asterisk with a reference to it is moving forward. The third, the second thing I asked him about was the third point, and it's the last bullet. Permit one tenant or applicant to represent and talk, take collective action on behalf of all tenants in a building. And this sounded really quite odd, that one tenant could affect everybody that lives in the building. And he and I chatted about that, and his explanation was very good because right now the process is a very democratic one, but it, it, the, it's very awkward. And so the one tenant or applicant to represent or take collective action on behalf of all tenants in the building is quite a legitimate process, actually, and one that my initial fears were allayed by my conversation with them. And there's, we don't, haven't had that situation in our circumstance here because we don't have a lot of rental tenancies in the township at this point in time, but in New Westminster there are a lot, and there's a definite need for that. So I just wanted to explain that. So I'm in support of that. I just wondered if we could put an asterisk or if we're throwing our support behind it, if we could in some way just mention, reference the framework.
If you wanted, because we're receiving, if you wanted to add an amendment to that effect, then we could do that.
Okay, I'll move.
No? Can't? Sorry. I've got clerks nodding.
Okay.
When they're nodding negatively, I know I have to stop.
Well, we're just wondering in direction. At this point, we've received the motion.
Okay, then.
We've given, you've given no instructions as to what we're supposed to do with it.
So we'll just receive and then we'll do, we'll do a follow-up motion.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for that. Counsel Long?
Yeah, your worship, I appreciate this and I receive it and I vote for that, but I just want to make it clear that this doesn't make, if we put a support and send letters that we support it, that's fine and dandy, but it doesn't make a spot of difference when it hits the floor at the UBCM. What I believe is being asked for here is that you're getting some background information, you're getting the heads up. Those delegates that appear at the UBCM need to speak in favor of it and, most importantly, vote for it. So I would rather not send letters and say we support this or that because I haven't had the full discussion and heard from the rest of the members. I certainly take Counsel Fox's heads up, as I do from Mayor Cotte, and I think we should just receive it and with a smile.
Okay.
And go to the convention and speak to it and fight for it there.
Okay, so the motion right now is just to receive, just to receive. So I'm going to call the vote on each one. Receipt is carried unanimously. Now, hearing what Counsel Long says, Counsel Fox, if you wish to make a motion or if you just want to take it as direction, take it to the floor. No, let me put yours. I'll just leave it.
I mean, I'm not going to UBCM. I'm hoping that people will take direction at UBCM. And I realize it's a bit of a tricky thing when you mention something that's a Metro Vancouver because there's a whole wide world out there that doesn't live in Metro Vancouver and don't understand it. But I'm hoping that there's a reference because I think the work that was done is so valuable that just to lose it really is a waste of time, energy, and sacrifice that was put into that. So, okay, I'll take it as direction.
Thank you. Okay, next item is Minutes of Committees, H1, Seniors Advisory Committee. Could we have a motion to receive?
Move.
Counsel Qualley, Counsel Fox, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call a question on H1. Carries unanimously. Another business, I would have one piece of other business. I'd like to move that council refers the delegation of Lorraine Cameron to staff to work with Ms. Cameron to seek cooperation to her claim of that she paid the taxes and report back to council. Second, by Counsel Qualley, discussion on that? Counsel Fox?
Nope. No, I got something else.
Counsel Richter, discussion on that?
Yes, I'm wondering if we can pay her the refund on her interest as well. Could that be included in whatever report that comes back to us?
And that would be once, once, once staff report back to council with their findings, at that point, council can make that determination. And that's the intent of having staff report back. So give us the facts, come back, then we can.
Yeah. And I would also, because I did run into the same thing this year myself, where they wouldn't take my, give me a receipt that I paid my taxes because I had a post-dated cheque. I think that practice needs to stop.
I don't know if we can do that. Ms. Sinclair, on the.
There needs to be some sort of acknowledgement that I was there, that I handed in my homeowners and I handed in a cheque.
But post-dated cheque, as I understand, is not legal tender. That's the difficulty.
No, but refusing to give a receipt for that?
No, because it's not legal tender. Ms. Sinclair?
I think, I think it's a valid point in that we could, we could come up with something that proves that we received, like received the envelope. It doesn't necessarily mean the cheque won't bounce. It doesn't mean something else won't go wrong, but we could look at coming up with a process to acknowledge receipt of the envelope. That's what I get from the discussion.
Well, I find it very odd that this happens, this has been happening in the last two years because, as they say, I've paid taxes in this community for over 30 years and I've never run into this before, ever. And I think it's wrong.
Ms. Sinclair can take that as direction. Also, I know certainly the video surveillance was discussed between myself and Ms. Sinclair and that can be reported to council too. So the motion is basically referring this to work with this woman. So with that, I'll call a question. Oh, sorry, speakers are waiting, I missed that. Who's wishing to speak? Somebody? Okay, I'm going to call the question on, on I1. Carries unanimously. Now Counsel Fox, there you go.
Thank you. Couple of things here. Number one, just to really, if I could request some direction to staff, we have school zones, and this was actually discussed at a, at a school district liaison meeting. We have school zones and traditionally in the summer, school zones don't exist anymore. And I think that our staff are aware of this and we don't turn the signs down because school's still going on. We've got summer school going on in a number of campuses, a number of sites. What I'm asking for is if on the township page, we could A, send out a reminder to the public that school is still in session in many campuses and potentially list those campuses so the public is well-aware. Can we do that?
It's done.
Oh, it's done?
It's been done. It's done.
Okay, excellent. The second thing I have, and this is something again with the township page, in South Langley, we have a tremendous issue with deer and rabbits and a lack of coyotes. So the, Mother Nature's in an imbalance right now. The coyotes are, for whatever reason, don't seem to exist in the numbers they were. And so we have a lot of deer and a lot of rabbits, far more than we usually have in any given year. So I'm just wondering if we could reactivate the wildlife education piece in the township page. I think there's enough templates just reminding people to be aware and to be cognizant of the fact that deer do cross roads early in the morning, late at night, and to be aware. Can we do that?
Sure, data's direction. Thank you.
Okay. The third thing is the Massey Bridge. Could I ask potentially for staff, engineering in particular, to get a copy of the document from the city of Delta, municipality of Delta, I guess it is, with respect to the Massey Bridge? They've done a tremendous amount of work in the, it's Corporation of Delta, isn't it?
They're just, they're changing it to the city.
Yeah, I think it's Corporation of Delta right now. If we could get copies for our council of the, I think it's a 400-page document, I hate to say that, but with respect to the Massey Bridge project. And we could distribute them and I would have a notice of motion prepared for the July 24th meeting in respect to that because I think this is a very important project and it's something that certainly the commuters and residents of South Langley by and large, excuse me, would find necessary in terms of movements, traffic movements between here and the city of Vancouver. So they've done a lot of background work, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. So my point.
We can, as a direction, provide if it's available. Okay, then, thank you.
Yeah, and I did have one other thing. Oh, can we send a letter to the Langley Baseball Nationals Tournament sponsorship? This is a three-year, it's number 19, or number nine on today's distribution list? If you could take direction maybe and send them a funding request so that they could apply through our normal funding application process? Is that possible?
You motion for that?
No, you're, sport hosting?
Sport hosting, yeah.
For our sport hosting program, yeah, we can send.
Yeah, they've written requesting monies. I don't know if Sport Langley will support them. Does Sport Langley support them?
It should, yeah. We'll make sure they're aware of the programs, we can follow up.
Okay, and aware of our grant process. Thank you. That's all.
Counsel Sparrow?
Yeah, my comments are on Counsel Fox's previous comments about the school zone. I think it's something that in, like in previous years, they would, I think it would have been township staff would have done it, but with the flipping of the school signs so you knew for the summer that that was not a school zone. Given that, I imagine that's labor costs and that sort of thing, that seems to have gone by the wayside over the years. And so I do think it's really important. I was there today actually registering my daughter for school at the local school and it was as busy with summer school as it is on any other school day. And I do think that drivers, you know, assume that school's out of session and they don't pay attention to the school zones. So I think that maybe we need to have maybe more of a discussion on whether or not we could have some other type of signage. I know the township page is, you know, a good place to advertise, but I would hedge a guess that we don't reach every one of our citizens that drive through our township with that. And so given that we don't have that indicator of the signs being flipped and in some school zones, the signs remaining in place, I think maybe in the future or for previous, or for future years, we could look at having some even type of signage that we could add to it that says school, you know, summer school in session or some sort of, some sort of thing that we could even just attach to the signs that indicate that that is still an active school zone in that particular area because it is, I think, definitely a concern, especially with some of these younger kids who are still walking to schools, to summer school, their parents are all still working and there's, you know, just as much activity around those schools in July as there is in September. So I do think that's something we need to look at and maybe a future way of still indicating those specific schools with, with summer school active in them. So just add those comments.
Thank you. Look at that, perhaps a memo back to us. Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. Just further to Counsel Fox's request for information regarding the Massey replacement, I don't actually want a 400-page document. I'd like it electronically, please. So please don't print all that paper. So if you could send it electronically, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
I would just like the summary, one page.
The executive summary.
Maybe Counsel Fox could write it, yeah.
Is there any other business? All right, so we'll close the other business part and we move to presentations. D1 is the summary of the Brookswood Furniture Public Hearing comments. And we have a presentation by staff. We have three members of our staff, Mr. Seffy, Mr. Chu, and Mr. Russell. Russell, I've got a. Nelson, thank you. Mr. Nelson. Let me get your mic on there. Okay.
Thank you, your worship. The focus of the presentation is on the public submissions, both oral and written. That were provided as part of the public hearing on the proposed Brookswood Furniture Community Plan update. In the presentation, we hope to provide a thematic summary of the public feedback from the hearing and try and address and make reference to other related issues that have come up by members of council in their note-taking and interpretation of the public hearing input that has been received.
Just to interrupt, Mr. Seffy, I understand from our conversation earlier, you have a fairly substantial presentation and that perhaps council take notes and save any questions to the end because your question may be answered, you know, through the presentation, so allow staff to go through it. And then we'll go through a substantial question period to dig down any deeper that council would like. So just ask council to take your notes, hold your questions, and then hopefully they're answered in the presentation, but if not, I know you're here to answer them, all three of you. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, it is a fairly substantial presentation, your worship. It's about, roughly about 70 slides, so if you think about, I don't know, about a minute a slide, it's going to take over an hour for staff to go over and cover.
Are we getting a copy of those slides?
Hard copies can be provided to council, certainly at a future date. We don't have them right now. In terms of an outline of the presentation, your worship, I will be providing a bit of a context for the presentation in terms of where we've been and where we're going to. We'll then ask Mr. Chu and Mr. Nelson to provide council with each one of the public hearing submission themes as well as staff positions, staff recommendations, implications, consequences, and other matters that council should be aware of relating to each one of those themes. Then we'll reference a couple of submissions from members of council. Due to time constraints, we haven't had time to fully analyze those as we have had the public hearing submissions, but we've, we will cover if there are independent submissions that were not covered as part of the prior slides, set of slides. And then we'll have some agency comments to review as well as staff recommended changes. And we'll follow up with, with next steps. This, your worship, is a slide that council has seen previously. What I want to make sure we cover here is actually what happens or what did happen prior to Phase 1. And just remind council that early in this term, council gave staff direction as part of their priority-setting sessions to complete the update, the Brookswood plan, as soon as possible, or is one of the priorities that was identified by council, and that was reiterated in subsequent priority-setting sessions, not just the first one, but the second and third one, as I recall. So this is following up on staff, council direction to staff. With that, your worship, the first phase, which was definition, took place between April and July of last year. Phase 2, the discovery, involved background, context, and policy analysis in the fall of last year. Phase 3, the options, involved development of ideas, opportunities, and options in early this year. And that followed with planning, involvement, involving the development of a draft plan in April of this year. And we are now in the final Phase 5 stage, which is adoption by council of the update.
Mr. Seffy, if I could just interrupt. Perhaps staff could print the deck and then by the time we get to questions, council could have the deck in front of them, slide deck. Oh, you have them? Okay, great, thanks. So they're already on it? Okay, way ahead of me. Thank you.
In terms of the public participation in all of those prior stages, your worship, staff confirms that approximately between 500 to 600 individuals were involved at each one of those phases. This was unprecedented in terms of the number and the type and the scope of the public engagement process that was undertaken, which included a committee planning team as well as out-of-the-box thinking in terms of brainstorming sessions, in terms of one-on-one meetings with the public, workshops, and surveys, both online and otherwise. So this resulted, your worship, in the plan. And in terms of, I guess, again, putting it in context, just this slide references the fact that currently, there's over 13,000 people that reside in the Brookswood Furniture Community Plan area. Approximately 4,000, over 4,000 were engaged as part of the process. 5,600 individual notices were mailed out, your worship, to invite people to attend a public hearing. That was beyond the other public engagement processes that took place, the mandatory one, the public hearing. 5,600. 450 people out of the 5,600 actually attended the public hearing based on staff records, 43 of whom spoke at the public hearing, presented council with verbal submissions, and council received 98 written submissions. Out of all of that, 25 individual or unique points of concern were expressed. So hopefully, again, your worship, this puts the concerns in a bit of a context in terms of. of no plan being able to address everyone's concerns ever. This is, this is something that has gone through two years of process, and staff believe it's representative of the majority of the public's input to date. Again, just reiterating the previous slide, Your Worship, over five thousand households, as well as advertising in the local paper about the public hearing, four hundred and fifty attended the public hearing on June twenty-seventh, fifty-three verbal submissions, forty-three unique, with ten people speaking twice, as well as ninety-eight written submissions. Many submissions did not outright support or object to the proposed plan, but rather expressed concerns for specific plan elements. And at this point, I'm going to ask Mr., Messrs. Chu and Nelson to come up, and with your indulgence, Your Worship, they will go back and forth, just to make sure that we don't put council to sleep with the change of tone and voice, I think that would be a good idea. Both of them have worked very hard in not just the preparation of the plan, but also analyzing the input that has been received, as well as their staff, so.
Clarification on your last, you said many submissions did not outright support or object to the proposed plan. Do we have a percentage?
Your Worship, I believe we'll cover those. So in the first case, for example, the theme that was developed was, was overall plan. So even though fifty-one submissions were received, twenty-eight of them provided support. Out of that twenty-eight, twenty-seven was general support, with one support specifically for Cedar Ridge South. And in terms of concerns, twenty-three of the forty-three expressed concerns, eighteen of which were generally concerned or opposed, but then we had some specifics. As you can see there, you know, two, the suggestion is that it's too similar to the 2014 plan, one insufficient detail, one the phasing detail, one doesn't really correspond with the rural character. So we have the numbers, and as I said, Mr. Chu and Nelson will go over these.
Thank you, Your Worship. So looking at the slide, one thing that has been raised by the public at the public hearing, as well as by some members of council, has to do with phasing. Phasing is actually discussed in Section 9.1 of the proposed plan, and that particular section starts on page 224 of the Evening Agenda package. Under Section 9.1, Policy Number One actually speaks about neighborhood planning as a phasing mechanism. We've been engaging with the, with the community, and one of the key things that the community expressed was face development, meaning that we should look at opening one contiguous area at the, at one point in time, instead of accepting applications throughout the community. So as a result of what we've learned from the community, we have put that into the proposed plan, again, under Policy One, Section 9.1. Related to neighborhood planning is the Neighborhood Plan Initiation Policy. This policy was actually adopted by council back in 1989, almost twenty years ago, just before we started development of Willoughby. This is a quick snapshot of the policy. Generally, the policy is concerned about growth management and allocating growth in areas, and providing stability where growth is not contemplated at the, at one point in time. And there are some principles embedded in the policy, and some of the principles are like maintaining seven-year worth of land for development. We also look at overall growth rate for the township, and the 2.2, we're looking at about three percent annual growth, spanning about seven years. And here are the other principles embedded in the policy. Also, under Section 9.1, we talk about the content, the required content of a neighborhood plan.
Okay, density is one of our top mentions in the public hearing, Item Two here in our themes, with twenty-nine specific references. You'll note on the slide, three submissions supported, or four submissions supported the proposed density in the plan. One submission included a petition of nineteen owners who were requesting an increase in the density in the community plan. We also received twenty-five submissions that did not like the higher density, or the smaller lot size provided in the plan. The proposed Brookswood Fern Ridge Community Plan has been prepared according to the Terms of Reference that council endorsed back in April of 2016, and there were certain parameters or items that we followed as we went through our process in the development of this plan, and several of them are listed there. So one being, there's no change to the developed area, the focus was on the undeveloped area. The update focused on established policies, such as the regional growth strategy and our official community plan. We also drew upon best practices, again, formed by other planning and strategy documents of our township, technical analysis, and public engagement. The proposed Brookswood Fern Ridge Community Plan has a population projection of approximately thirty-nine thousand at full build-out. This results in an overall population density of approximately twelve persons per acre. And what's shown here in the slide is this chart demonstrates how the proposed density compares with that of other communities in the township, including Willoughby, which is approximately double the density at twenty-five persons. And in this slide is a table that provides a comparison of the proposed plan, community plan relative to the existing eighty-seven plan and the 2014 plan, which was not approved by council. Again, the existing plan has a population projection of thirty-five, the 2014 had, had forty-three thousand, and this proposed has thirty-nine. So again, within the Terms of Reference, these bookends were noted in terms of finding an appropriate balance or an appropriate outcome in terms of future population, somewhere between thirty-five thousand and forty-three thousand. And this thirty-nine thousand does account for both developed and undeveloped, so it's the entirety of the Brookswood Fern Ridge Community Plan. So what the community had to say about density was consistent with the public hearing submissions we heard, the topic has been a popular one throughout this whole process. This is just an excerpt from our Phase Three Engagement Summary. In it, you'll note, again, sort of a range of opinions that were being heard by us through this process, and that it continued through all our phases. One thing that is predicated or not shown in this slide is that we did receive in this phase five hundred and fifty feedback forms, people giving us a whole range of comments and feedback on material that was presented. And again, when it came to the question of density, it was fairly evenly split, those that wanted more, those that wanted less, so.
The third most mentioned topic had to do with smaller single-family lots. Smaller single-family lots wasn't, twenty-three submissions were concerned about smaller lots. So it's noted here at the bottom of the slide, seventeen people basically said four thousand square foot lots were too small, and four submissions disapproved lots that are anything smaller than seven thousand, and two submission would like to get more details about what's being proposed. So when we looked at the submissions, actually, the range of lot size topic is part of the housing mix equation. The developed areas of Brookswood Fern Ridge are mostly characterized by seven thousand square foot lots and ten thousand square foot lots. Now, a range of four thousand square foot to seven thousand square foot lots is proposed for the plan to achieve a broader mix of housing. We would like to point out that the plan proposed a range, and not only four thousand square foot as a minimum. Four thousand square foot lots are not an outright provision, but rather in cases where tree protection may be desirable and practical, subject to a subsequent, more detailed neighborhood plan analysis and council approval. The new vision at the bottom of the slide in the proposed plan articulates the desire of building a complete community. One of the elements of a complete community is a mix of housing types. In addition, having a range of lot sizes from four thousand square foot lots to seven thousand square foot lots support a number of the plan's guiding principle. And we have four guiding principles on the screen. Guiding principle number one is to protect the natural environment by providing opportunities to cluster new housing on a portion of a development site to protect trees. Principle number four is to build a livable community pattern by facilitating opportunities to provide an appropriate transition between multifamily dwellings and larger single-family lots. Guiding principle number seven is to provide housing choices. And principle number eight is to support transportation diversity by directing smaller single-family lots to the centers, and as such, encourage walking and cycling. And here's an excerpt from our Phase Three Engagement Summary, and that's basically what people said about housing mix. And that's an excerpt from the Phase Four Engagement Summary. People felt that the land use plan addressed the housing mix.
Our next theme is around the wording in the OCP policies and guidelines. Again, we've got twenty-four comments, primarily focused on concerns or issues related to that, some twenty-three of them making reference to a need for more definitive wording, where in some, one case, there was a desire for greater clarity that could come from that in terms of the policies within the plan. So the community plan is a visionary document. As set out in Section 471 of the Local Government Act, an official community plan is a statement of objectives and policies to guide decisions on planning and land use management. It's visionary by its nature, not restrictive, but rather permissive with conditions. It encourages creativity and innovation based on community values which may evolve over time. To avoid frequent, and also it helps to adjust to avoiding frequent or relatively minor OCP amendments by giving it its guiding focus. So most of the non-definitive wording, such as the use of may or should, can be found in the Development Permit Area Guidelines, section, which is the last section of the plan. So just as an example, the word should, ten percent of that use of that word comes, is seen in Sections Two through Nine, and ninety percent of that use of that word is found in Section Ten in the Development Permit Area Guidelines. The Development Permit Area section has been prepared based on case law and best practices. The same best practice wording can be found in other plans in the township and elsewhere in the province. The flexible wording is inherent in the Local Government Acts. We've got a couple of quotations here, so from Section 488 of the Local Government Act speaks to the development of Development Permit Area Guidelines. So a couple here regarding B.C. planning law around optional, they're optional in terms of content within official community plan. An application of Development Permit Area Guidelines usually requires a certain amount of balancing objectives and trading off compliance with one guideline against compliance with another. So the more affirmative the language is, you end up with conflict. So to provide more flexible language, it gives you that ability when you're looking at any particular application and finding those trade-offs. And the flexibility of Development Permit Area Guidelines allow council to fairly exercise its discretion in granting or refusing a permit on a case-by-case basis, while providing objective principles to guide council's conditions for approving or refusing a development permit application.
The fifth most mentioned topic at the public hearing was the Tree Protection Bylaw. We had one submission that supported the proposed bylaw, and twenty submissions expressed concerns. Nine of them were general concerns about the proposed bylaw, and then five comments were made regarding tree protection. And some other comments had to do with higher fines and the fact that the proposed bylaw was not restrictive or punitive enough. So, and then two comments regarding the application to the entire community planning area. With respect to the maximum fines proposed, we're basically limited by provincial legislation. In the first case, pursuant to the Local Government, Local Notice Enforcement Act, bylaw enforcement officers can only write a notice for up to five hundred dollars. And with respect to the maximum fine permitted under the community charter, the maximum fine permitted is ten thousand dollars if we take the offense to court. The intent of the Tree Protection Bylaw is to protect trees, basically to prevent clear cutting before development takes place. And that's why our recommendation was to focus on the undeveloped area, because we have very limited capacity to apply the proposed bylaw in the developed areas. As mentioned in the last slide, the proposed fines were basically set by, the maximum fine was set by the province, and we're using exactly the same fine limits in the currently enforced 2014 interim tree cutting bylaw. In addition to imposing fines, council can actually consider rezoning applications in the broader context, including prematurely cutting trees and imposing additional conditions, including compensation at the time of rezoning.
Our next theme is to do, is addressing the Cedar Creek Estates, the manufactured home park. We received eighteen submissions, oral and written, regarding this. Of those nine, made a request to have the manufactured home park designation be applied to Cedar Creek Estates, some, seven spoke a little bit more generally about needing protection, and a couple mentioned the need for potentially additional manufactured home parks in the area. So just as an overview then, the community plan is a land use designation, and it does not change current zoning. The proposed designations for the property in question is a split zone between single-family tree and a row house, townhouse designation on the east half adjacent to 200th Street. The split designation is in consideration of the site's location, again, along a major arterial, and would provide flexibility for possible future arterial, and would provide flexibility for possible future phasing by having that split designation. So the row home, townhome portion could accommodate some non-market units to help facilitate relocation of residents in the future, and that's captured using a housing agreement. And redevelopment of the site is subject to the Neighborhood Plan process, rezoning and subdivision application, our manufactured home parks redevelopment policy, and the Provincial Residential Tenancy Act and regulations. And the designation, again, 1987 plan has a land use designation that is different from what the current manufactured home park zoning is. So again, we haven't deterred or diverted from that in that respect.
The seventh most mentioned theme was the Community Planning Process. We received 12 submissions. They were generally concerns about the planning process, including the comment that the process is not authentic. Many of the voices were not acknowledged. Some said it was a developer's plan, and some had issues about the in-stream applications. One submission actually said that the proposed plan deferred too much planning to the neighborhood plan level. We followed the process outlined in the Terms of Reference for the entire project. It was designed to have a lot of engagement activities, including five open houses, 32 dialogue sessions, 17 workshops, and we also received over 130 emails and letters from members of the community. And members of the community also completed over 1,000 questionnaires and feedback forms throughout the entire process. And not to mention that we actually have a community planning team, 13 members, and they met six times during this process. So we've heard from many voices, and there were many wishes, including the voices from the various groups in the community, including township staff. There was a technical team operating in tandem in the background, looking at all the things that we do, so making sure that our policies are followed, our bylaws are properly aligned. And we also worked with government agencies like Metro Vancouver, City of Langley, City of Surrey, and the Langley School District. So this is just a basic representation of the many voices that we've heard from, and we may not be able to follow all the voices because of competing wishes, and we just have to look at the broader community context and prepare a plan based on all the existing policy framework.
Our eighth theme is Cluster Development. Again, we got a range of perspectives and opinions shared in this theme. There were three of the 10 that supported the concept, understood the intent of tree and habitat protection that came with that, although one person suggested there be a low-rise apartment forms considered as part of that cluster development concept. And then of the 10, seven expressed concerns that some additional clarity was required in the policy, and three individuals generally just disliked the concept. The material presented in this slide is just a portion of what we've shared throughout the process, beginning back in Phase Three of the process, trying to explain the concept and what the benefits and trade-offs that could come about as a result of that, and just a couple of notes or points related to and about cluster development. So the concept is intended to provide protection for significant trees or tree stands, developed based on community input and feedback. It is a policy that is subject to a subsequent, more detailed neighborhood planning process, and not every development site or development application would be entitled to cluster development. The proposed policy provides council with the authority to consider clustering of units if trees are protected. And this slide, just as an example of a local situation where cluster development was applied, and this is 216th is the road on the left of your screen, 216th Street, north of 88th. Redwoods Golf Course would be on the far right of the photograph there. This is a 4,000-square-foot lot subdivision, and it's noteworthy that all, you'll see a kind of a circuitous polygon or shape on the eastern portion adjacent to the golf course, where a fair bit of trees and tree protection and other conservation issues were captured and maintained in that circumstance.
And I would note that on the east side, east half of the aerial photograph, we actually own those properties that are treet now, so it's protected perpetually under the township's The ninth most popular or most mentioned theme was conservation of the environment. There were nine submissions. Two of them were just generally about the environment, and then the additional two mentioned identification of more conservation areas for wildlife, and then two submissions about preserving green space, one about protecting the bodies of water down in Brookswood Fernridge, and then one comment about no direction for tree replacement, and then one comment just generally about wildlife. What we're recommending in the proposed plan is a multi-pronged approach to basically things green and conservation. Based on best practices and case law, the proposed Integrated Land Use Plan cannot show the specific location of future parks and school sites unless they are owned by the township. As a result, the proposed plan does not show areas or properties where schools, parks, and other conservation areas would be located. This is just a generalized diagram in front of you, and we have these components within the plan, and these are the policy approaches that we're trying to present as an integrated step to preserve conservation and treet areas.
Our 10th theme is around the size and location of the community-serving walkable center. There was one comment that was in support of it, felt that it fit well with other policies within the township. There were eight that expressed some concerns, three about its general location and thought that it should be relocated. Others gave actually specific relocation suggestions, moving it southwesterly on the other side of 200th Street. And there were a couple of additional comments around just general concern for additional commercial development, and one more emphatically stating that there isn't a need for any more commercial areas. So just a couple of thoughts about the commercial village. So it is consistent with the 1987 plan, where most of the commercial uses are designated at the northeast corner of 200th Street and 32nd Avenue. The centralized location is within a reasonable walking distance of most of the proposed townhome and apartment forms of housing in the area. The commercial village would create synergy with the Knoll Booth Community Park and other amenities that are right there, again, providing kind of a central park and amenity for the community. And it is located on the east side of 200th Street, where two-thirds of the build-out population would reside. And last but not least, the northeast corner location was preferred by most of the respondents who filled out their feedback forms back in Phase Three. So it was a very dominant perspective relative to the other two concepts for locations.
Another theme that emerged from the public hearing was the provision of roads and infrastructure. There were nine submissions, and people were concerned about disorderly infrastructure delivery. Some did not like any road increases at all. One person mentioned an engineering aspect at 32nd Avenue where it would intersect 208th Street. One person mentioned about funding for infrastructure. He believed that the funding was too high. One person commented about lack of infrastructure, and the last comment had to do with the extension of, proposed extension of 32nd Avenue all the way east to 216th Street. These comments are basically related to probably another discussion, a higher-level discussion. Provision of roads and other municipal infrastructure is based on key policy direction and instruments. We do have a principle for growth to pay for growth, and many of our recommendations within the plan are based on the master transportation plan that was adopted in 2009, Parks and Recreation Master Plan that's been in place for quite some time, not to mention the long-term financial plan and the annual budgeting process. We also have a bylaw for development cost charges, as well as subdivision and development servicing. And last but not least, we make recommendations and council make decisions based on the life and safety of the residents.
Our 12th theme deals with parking and traffic. Again, eight persons gave some comments in that regard, several regarding potential increases in traffic in the community, worries about parking problems related to potentially smaller lots. One person mentioned the concern of a proposed bike greenway along the back of their property, and then another comment just generally about parking overall. So the proposed, as Jason alluded to, the proposed road network for Brookswood Fernridge is predicated on our master transportation plan. The area will see increased traffic over time. Additional road network, however, considerations will be part of the neighborhood planning process, and additional detailed transportation and traffic analysis forms part of that companion document that comes with the neighborhood plan, that being the Engineering Services Plan. Parking, we did hear a lot of that throughout our process, as well as the comments there on the public hearing. Again, some parking management policies are included in the proposed community plan, and further policy and regulatory measures would be explored as part of neighborhood
Community amenities is another topic that we heard at the public hearing. We received seven submissions under this particular topic, and they basically identified trails, community amenity charges, off-road greenways and trails. They were also concerned about specific amenities and locations. One comment was made about having too much parkland. Comments regarding community amenities focus on greenways and trails. In Sections 5.2 and 5.3 of the proposed plan, general locations for trails and street greenways are identified. Details regarding trails and greenways will be further considered as part of the NP process. The amount of parkland identified in the proposed plan has been right-sized based on the OCP and Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Additional community amenities will be determined through the neighborhood planning and considered in light of the Township Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Basically, the plan specifies two acres of parkland for 1,000 population, and that is on top of the additional pocket parks and other greenways that we identified in each of the neighborhood. So this is a map of the open space and community amenities. One thing I would point out is because of case law, we're not able to identify the specific locations of future parks and school sites. Instead, we're identifying them by using ovals located right on the roads, municipal right-of-way. So in this general neighborhood, for example, you will see that we're identifying a secondary school, community park, and middle school in this general vicinity, which is not shown green on the map at all. So I can identify other instances where we use the oval to show future locations of parks and school sites.
Our 14th is regarding the 1987 plan. Seven participants at the public hearing provided or indicated they had a preference for the 1987 plan. Retention of the 30-year-old plan is certainly an option. Our policy analysis suggests that the 87 version is lacking and are a bit thin on a number of policy topics and does not necessarily align well with our Township Official Community Plan and other strategies and master plans in the municipality that have been developed since 30 years ago. So this and the next two slides just provide a simple comparison between the 87 and the 2017 plans. So I'll just point out some highlights. So 2017 plan, we have a vision statement, a set of guiding principles. Current plan, 87 plan does not. We have a brand-new section on a community that provides a community framework, provides policy guidance around complete communities, our centers, the areas beyond, residential cluster development, character and identity. Again, current 87 plan does not. Regarding land use, the 87 plan accommodates 35,000 population. Proposed 2017 proposes 39. 87 plan doesn't have mixed use anywhere in the plan, so it separates residential and commercial, for example. Again, our, the proposed 2017 plan looks at mixed forms of housing to improve greater walkability in the neighborhood. 87 plan, it's fairly homogeneous in terms of its residential areas. There's a very limited range or mix of housing, and through the 2017, looked at expanding that and providing different opportunities to address different needs and desires, affordability, aging in place, transit supportive, and so forth. 87 plan does have some policies around location of schools and parks, doesn't when it comes to trails and greenways or guidance around heritage resources. So 2017 plan kind of picks up many of those, and then also gives some greater consideration given to landscape design and community connectivity as a result. Environment, again, 87 plan's a little thin in that regard. 2017 plan, again, lining with our official community plan and other strategies, the policies focus on integrity of groundwater resources, our protection of our water courses, policies around trees, integration of wildlife habitat, energy efficiency, and so forth. Mobility and transportation, 87 plan, you know, has some policies regarding roadways for materials collectors, a little bit modest on the pedestrian or cyclist component, and has no parking management policies. So again, 2017 plan tries to pick up many of those shortcomings. Regarding utilities and services, the 87 plan is based on a 1985 analysis when it comes to all things utilities. So again, staff's perspective, it's a little bit dated. There are a few policies around stormwater, water, and those kind of things. New plan, kind of new thinking when it comes to provision of utilities, and new key documents that inform the plan, certainly not the least of which is the two integrated stormwater management plans that were done. 87 plan does have some implementation policies in it, although I would suggest that the commitment around neighborhood planning is a little modest or minimal. 2017 plan really is a more forthright when it indicates, whoops, sorry, throughout the policies in the plan, but also in the implementation section about the importance of neighborhood planning and fulfilling the policies within the community plan. And then last but not least, the Development Permit Area Guidelines in the 87 plan, again, they're fairly modest, and the new plan includes around 160 policies around guidelines that cover a range of development permit conditions, whether that's form and character for commercial mixed-use multifamily, guidelines around protection of farming, and things around energy, water conservation, GHG reduction, emission reductions, and so forth. energy, water conservation, GHG reduction, emission reductions, and so forth.
This is theme number fifteen, so we have ten more to go. Number fifteen has to do with stormwater management and aquifer protection. We received seven submissions, and they were generally concerned about the aquifer and best management practices to basically uphold the quality of the aquifer. Section six of the proposed plan provides a range of policies that align and reinforce those in the water management plan and the two integrated stormwater management plans. Through future neighborhood plans, further neighborhood design work would be done, including engineering services plans, that further detail implementation of the proposed plan policy, along with the policies and recommendations of the water management plan and the Anderson Creek and Fernridge Integrated Stormwater Management Plans amongst others.
Few participants at the hearing mentioned their desire for larger lots rather than smaller. The proposed community plan does include larger single family lots, as expressed in the land use designation for Single Family One and Single Family Two. These two designations account for over fifty percent of the Brookswood Fernridge area. However, based on our complete communities policy framework that's in our official community plan, and other policies contained in our housing action plan, and our age friendly strategy, and so forth, the proposed community plan includes policies that speak to and provide for a range and a mix of housing types to address these foundational documents. So just as an example, so in the housing action plan, for example, it has a policy about land use plans, including anywhere from thirty to fifty percent of the land area assigned to housing of a multifamily form of development. So if you reflect back a number of slides, we showed the comparison between the eighty seven, twenty fourteen, and twenty seventeen plan. The twenty seventeen plan comes in at around thirty three percent for land area dedicated for, or for units dedicated in a multifamily form.
Two, sorry, six submissions at the public hearing provided comments on multifamily housing. Some submissions did not want any multifamily, and others suggested that more was required. This diversity of opinion reflects the range of perspectives that were voiced throughout the process and informed the focus of community dialogues and discussions as part of the engagement events. The complete communities policy framework, the housing action plan, and the age friendly strategy are foundational to the preparation of the proposed plan. And they all indicate that land use plans should provide a range of housing options for a variety of households and stages of life.
Okay, our next one, utilities, development cost charges specifically. So a handful of folks, five participants at the hearing, provided us a comment in that regard, most often specifically to development cost charges. So a couple suggested the DCCs should be used to upgrade utilities in the developed areas, not just the undeveloped. And others indicating the importance of utility upgrades more generally in the spending of the DCC funds that are collected, keeping those and, and putting them back into the community. Again, neighborhood plans, as those are developed, we do give consideration to inclusions and updates to the township's DCC bylaw, so additional utility park or any other things that would fall under the DCC bylaw, we'd consider that.
Three submissions mentioned the need to address housing affordability. The proposed plan draws upon the housing action plan and the age friendly strategy. For example, the housing action plan directs the inclusion of housing mixed policies, and at least thirty percent of the housing stock should be medium to high density housing. The age friendly strategy also directs, directs communities to accommodate all residents of all ages. Both of these policy documents align with the complete communities policy framework in the proposed plan.
Number twenty, few contributors to the public hearing indicated concerns that additional schools, hospitals, and other emergency service improvements were needed. Throughout this process, we have certainly coordinated with the school district regarding requirements for future schools, including their recent programmatic change for future schools around the middle school program. So the proposed plan, as Jason alluded to, we have highlighted in the plan the need for additional elementary, middle, and high school, and their proximate locations. And there will be ongoing coordination and advocacy with them and other levels of government and emergency service providers as growth and change occurs in the community.
Three submissions supported the natural elements proposal that we are putting forward. In section nine point one, policy number four of the proposed plan, it talks about an updated mapping inventory of environmental features and ecological assets. This policy statement is supported by section three point five, policy one H of the plan as well. And that is to basically look after tree canopy. Tree canopies should be retained and enhanced. And the cost of doing an urban tree canopy study would be borne by developers who will be paying a planning administration fee as part of the neighborhood plan process.
A few comments were raised regarding public health and safety as the community develops. Concerns were raised relevant, well, sorry, concerns that were raised are relevant for the entire municipality, including Brookswood Fernridge. Pending future council direction, the development of a social sustainability plan, as identified in the township's official community plan, will provide policy and programmatic support in, in this arena. And also, application of crime prevention through environmental design guidelines are referenced multiple times in the plan in order to enhance community safety as development
Theme number twenty-three had to do with the height of buildings. A couple of comments raised concerns about the height of buildings. The proposed plan sets a height limit of two and a half stories for row homes, town homes, unless the neighborhood plan has identified areas where three stories would be permitted. The proposed plan sets a building height limit of four stories for apartments and mixed use buildings, and they are generally permitted in designated commercial village areas. So it's a very limited area within the proposed plan.
We received one submission suggesting that the focus of tree protection in the community may run counter to the goals and requirements of the B C Energy Step Code in order to achieve net zero energy, particularly as it relates to the use of solar energy. Certainly, the guidelines in our development permit area D in the proposed plan have been structured in such a way as to align with the legal and statutory framework, and then work hand in hand with the new B C Energy Step Code. And just as an aside, solar isn't all the only source of other sort of net zero energy sources. So again, something we can look at a little bit more closely at the neighborhood plan stage.
Last but not least, was seniors housing. And interestingly, that comment was the first comment of the public hearing where a retired teacher brought this concern to council. The need for seniors housing in Brookswood Fernridge was raised by one submission. The proposed plan permits senior housing within any residential land use designation, provided compliance with the policies of the land use designation. So it's just basically generally permitted within the entire planning area.
And then we got two agency comments, one from the Agricultural Land Commission. They noted a small, minor, minor error, so we've made a correction in that, and it shows up in this evening's agenda package that you got. And then we also got one from the Ministry of Agriculture, making a suggested name change to the development permit area from farmland protection to protection of farming.
So your worship, that concludes the summary of the public hearing submissions. But I do have a few more slides with your indulgence. First of all, as previously communicated to council, both at the public hearing and as part of memorandum, and also available for the public to view online, is the following recommended changes to clarify the intent and to strengthen the language around the two single family designations, Single Family Two and Single Family Three, with the underlined colored, blue colored sections being recommended by staff to, to be included or to be added to the definitions of the policy provisions of, of the, of the committee plan, to make sure, as I said earlier, the intent is clarified with respect to when such provision can be taken advantage of at council discretion, subject to a subsequent neighborhood planning stage. This includes the revisions to the policy sections, both for the Single Family Two, as well as the Single Family Three sections. And again, this, the intent is to protect natural environmental areas, including tree stands, as well as those required for streamside protection, as well as those required for buffering or transitioning with the agricultural land reserve. So these are the recommendations that staff are making for council to consider at a time of third reading, and...
Don't go through these so fast.
They were included previously, your worship, to council. They were part of a memorandum, they were part of the, the public hearing submissions as well. And we can go back to them again if council wishes to discuss them in more detail. But again, the intent being to clarify, strengthen the language that exists with respect to the intent of these provisions. Again, as staff mentioned during the, the presentation, these are not entitlements. These are just provisions for a future council, a time of rezoning, to be able to consider these if council at that time feels that they're appropriate means of protecting naturally important areas, including tree retention and, and other conservation measures. Finally, your worship, the submissions from councilors, two, two sets of submissions received, one by Councilor Arneson, the other one by Councilor Richter. And what I've done, what staff has done is to try and distinguish the unique ones that have not been previously addressed. In other words, the highlighted, the highlighted points are the ones that, that staff felt maybe were not specifically addressed as part of the twenty-five items that you just heard. So number four, for example, the OCP change to do with the Cedar Creek Phase Two Neighborhood Plan, Cedar Ridge, sorry. We have identified those separately, and the responses that staff have, or the comments that staff have, are shown here, at least with the comments put forward by Councilor Arneson, in terms of, the first one, Cedar Ridge include, is included in the, in the OCP update, the twenty seventeen, as, as part of a new neighborhood plan area. The onsite low impact development should be mandatory. That is typically done at the neighborhood planning stage, when more relevant details, such as the engineering services plan, and so water management plan, et cetera, is available. The language to include the importance of water conservation, and adoption of strategies to preserve and protect the aquifer. Again, this is typically done at the neighborhood plan stage, when more relevant information, such as the environmental services plan, and so water management plan information is available. Utilization of CACs for protection of forested areas, this could be done either at a subsequent neighborhood plan stage, or at a, as part of an independent process that, as council is aware, staff is currently underway or under review or currently undertaking, that being a community amenity contribution policy overview for the entire township of Langley. Restricting the, the lot coverage to preclude expansion of, of mansion homes, that is something that is, should be done as part of a zoning bylaw provision, because as council is aware, the zoning bylaw is the instrument that provides setback provisions that then determines the size of homes, not the community plan or enabled plan. So that could be done at a, as a separate process. The reference to the Step Code and design initiatives, initiatives to promote community energy initiatives. The community plan does identify development permit areas, specifically development period, development permit area D, which works hand in hand with the Step Code, which actually is going to be part of the building code, the B C Building Code. And staff will be providing council with a, a presentation as part of a, a future CPC regarding the B C Building Code provisions. Refer to age friendly strategy and the development of a community that is accessible and inclusionary of all ages and abilities to be reflected in the built design. The community plan update uses the age friendly strategy as a base, reference document as an important community value, and the sections that are currently in the community plan update, twenty seventeen community plan update, have been referenced here, where reference has been made to either seniors or a complete community or age friendly, where a variety of house, housing types have been referenced as being important to have in a community. Reference to complete communities and inclusion of social infrastructure, such as libraries, which is currently missing from the OCP. Again, policy two, section five point four of the Brookswood Plan Committee Plan, Brookswood Furnish Committee Plan Update, provides direction for location of such facilities in close proximity of the community enabled centers, in conjunction with long term financial plan, and the Fraser Valley Regional Library, as well as the development of future recreational and cultural master plans. We can determine, council can determine, exact locations of future facilities. And specific reference to electric vehicle, that is something that is a subject of, or the best place to address that, is part of the, the B C Building Code, which is the appropriate regulatory document that determines where EV structures should go, or as, as council reviews or considers the rezoning applications, council can certainly, as long as it's not going beyond the B C Code, B C Building Code requirements, can make that a requirement of any development application that council considers for, for rezoning. I have to apologize, not having had sufficient time to provide a detailed commentary or response to each one of the, the points raised by Councilor Richter, but again, just highlighting the ones that were sort of standing alone or, or not being, having been addressed previously, are the ones that are highlighted there. The only comment I would suggest, I would put forward to council is that those considerations could be undertaken at any time separately. They do not need to be part of the, the community plan update process. As an example, earmarking and dedicating DCCs collected for exclusive use in Brookswood Fernridge, that certainly could be something that council could give staff direction on. However, keeping in mind that currently, we have a township-wide DCC program. And if we were to move towards that, that requires a bit of untangling of, of the existing DCC program, in terms of having neighborhood or community-wide DCC programs, which would then allow us to specifically allocate funding collected from each community in that community only. Just in terms of background, that used to be the, the history and the context of the DCC program in the township, going back over two decades. And in the past twenty or twenty-five years, we've moved away from that and, and now have the, the more flexible DCC program that allows us to spend funds collected in any area, in another area, if, if council chooses to. So again, this is just a list of items that maybe were not addressed previously, highlighted. And as I said earlier, they could be addressed based on council direction, independently of the community plan update process. And that concludes our presentation, your worship. As I said, just over an hour. And we're available to provide any responses or comments to any questions that council might have. We thought it would be appropriate to have the, the land use plan on the, on the slide as we, as we go through the discussion.
Well, thank you very much. I think that was one of the most thorough presentations on a projected plan coming before council that I've ever been party to. And I know it took a lot of work on your behalf to summarize what we heard from the public hearing, and I do appreciate all the work that you put in. There are going to be some questions from council, and I want to assure council, we want to take whatever time is necessary to clarify anything prior to going into our, prior to going into considering third reading. We have two and a half, almost two and a half hours left in this meeting. If, and again, if it's not done, we're gonna, we'll, we'll find more time, but we want to make sure that everyone has an to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to clarify and ask questions of staff. With council's indulgence, I would ask for a five-minute recess, just so I can stretch and step outside, so unless there's any opposition, we'll just, with their consent, unanimous consent, okay, let's take a five-minute break, give staff a chance to get a drink of water and, and get ready, so we'll be back in about five. All right, we'll now reconvene the afternoon meeting, and so, if I could have council's attention, there's a procedure that we could go through now, and it would have to be with unanimous consent, if there isn't unanimous consent, then we would take it to the evening. Staff have indicated some amendments that they've recommended for this document, and to, maybe we can go back to those amendments, to, or with, if you can move the slides back, to, or with the, the farm, the language to do with the minor mapping error, okay, go back, one more. There we go. So the mining mapping error and the development permit area, see, name change, farmland protection to, protection of farmland, I think those are fairly straightforward. So, as I understand, we can make amendments to the bylaw prior to, coming to third reading, is that correct? If there's unanimous, is that right?
They're actually in the bylaw, Your Worship, now?
Oh, they are.
These amendments, we call these just housekeeping.
Okay.
These two in particular.
Those two, do they need an amending motion later on, or can they, or are they just accepted?
No, they don't.
They don't? Okay, so then that's already, okay, so move on to the next one then. And this is the language that council had opportunity to review a couple of weeks ago, and is now on, and so this could be an amendment to the bylaw prior to third reading, so the language is tight, you know, is in that bylaw, and it would be with unanimous consent, that I would ask council if they wished to...
I don't agree.
Okay, that's fair enough, then it would come on to third reading tonight, just wanted to see if council was amenable to that.
I have a question on order. The public hearing said that this bylaw would not be discussed by council until the meeting today, so I don't think we should be discussing this at all.
Okay, fair enough, so, that's fair enough, so, it was this discussion I had with Mr. Bakken, a way to, a process, so, at, at this point, it's a time for council to ask questions of staff for clarification, as, as, as not discussion, discussion will come up at third reading. And I, I do have a speaker's list, one suggestion has been to go slide by slide, I'm gonna go through this list, and then, there's other members of council who should speak, we have just over two hours to the end of the afternoon meeting, so hopefully everybody gets an opportunity to speak, and, and then, once I've gone through the speaker's list, we'll, we'll just go through slide, just quickly, slide by slide, and, and any questions that pop, pop up, okay?
I don't think we should discuss this.
We're not discussing?
I think we should discuss it, I've got questions.
Yeah.
But I don't think we should be down in the afternoon, I think we should be down here.
Fair enough, we're not discussing it, we're not debating the bylaw, we're only asking questions of staff regarding the presentation, and that's what...
Asking questions is part of debating the bylaw, isn't it?
No, it's not, it's what we're doing now, so, you know, this is part of it. Mr. Bakken, maybe you can help clarify the process.
I think, Your Worship, you wanted to discuss the presentation, the suggestions, it's quite right that the bylaw needs to be considered tonight, because the preamble you read out, reference that the bylaw would be considered, but this is actually framing and formulating the bylaw, so this can actually have a, can consist of a discussion.
As long as it's restricted to questions to staff, and not discussion on the bylaw, so clarification of points that they made, clarification of points that you, that we heard at the public hearing, and how does that relate to, to the bylaw, so councillor Fox?
Well, no, you're going through slides, go through slides.
Okay, is that...
Yep.
We, we can go through the slides, and then...
I think that focuses it strictly on discussion with staff relative to their presentation. Let's keep it at that level.
Sure.
That's it right now.
Sounds good.
Slide by slide?
Slide by slide, we'll just go through, and so...
Five questions of clarification.
Yeah, so, so we'll just go through, oh, the first slide, just, we have the pages in front of us, there's three slides, so if anybody has a question on those slides, just push the button, and I'm gonna clear the queue each time, so, and then we'll move on. So on the first page suite of three slides, councillor Long.
I was gonna concur with your process.
Okay, thank you. So nothing on the first suite, so we'll change the page, clear that queue, and on the second suite of three, on page two, no questions, we'll go to page three, no questions. Councillor Richter, on page three or four?
I'm on page three.
Okay.
Slide two there.
Slide two, okay.
Okay, so where will the phasing occur?
Your Worship, the committee plan has an outline of a naval plan phasing. This is based on a number of factors, as you see on the slide, on the, the slide, number of factors, including the natural topography, based on provincial and, and federal regulations, we try to make sure that the drainage is self-contained within each catchment, and doesn't go from, from one catchment to the other, that's one consideration. The other one is schools, and the other one is infrastructure, including the, the roads that are in the area. So this provides a, a map, if you will, in terms of what subsequent naval planning stages would look like, or should, should be. It does not mean that RIN, for example, cannot proceed until Booth has been done, which may be something that members of the public may be more interested in, or have requested council to consider. While that could be done, that is not currently the, the recommendation from staff, and it would be contrary to past practice, in terms of interfering, if you will, with, with market forces and the desire of the community.
What's the order? Is it Booth, RIN, Fernrich, Glenwood, or Booth, Fernrich, Glenwood, RIN?
Be, but it's actually determined by those who apply, isn't it? The policy sets forth that those who apply are considered in that order, is that correct, Mr. Seif?
That's correct, so, the ordering would be, as I said, up to the, the market and the owners within the area, so depending on, on the desire of the landowners within the area, the, both Booth and RIN could come potentially to council, with the landowners submitting a petition, requesting council to consider initiating a naval plan, and council could, in theory, at this point in time, based on no other provisions, no other limitations, based on past practice, could instruct staff, other than the council's existing naval plan initiation policy, which says that we must have a certain stock of, of serviced lands, if you will, in our, in our, in the municipality. Other than that, there's no other restrictions for council to, to initiate both at the same time, so there is no ordering suggested as part of the, the naval planning stage, phasing provisions.
Is there anything to prevent us from putting a specific order in?
Your Worship, other than the fact that, as I said, it would be inconsistent with past practice, and potentially, I guess, undesirable by, by some landowners in the area, and the development community as a whole, because they may wish to see the market conditions, market forces dictate where developer, development goes, as opposed to a predetermined strategy by, by council.
Bakken?
Worship, there is a, a market factor that would be interesting to observe, but could be a bit problematic, and that is if one area must be completely finished prior to another, the last few acres in, say, RIN could be worth significantly more than the area of Booth, because the property owners in RIN may say to the Booth property owners, we want that value. In effect, it's a bit of a density debate, it's not really a density transfer, but it's a density phasing that could actually create some, some anomalies that exist, we haven't seen that done in other areas, the existence could, it could take place, but it creates a monopoly in the area where the development's occurring. So in my example, RIN, if there's five acres left, still no other areas could begin to develop until those five acres developed, the incremental price on those five acres could be astronomical, because that could then mean the parties in Booth would have to acquire those before they could begin to develop.
Okay, councillor Sparrow, on page three.
Yeah, again, on, on the phasing topic, so, I know we've discussed this previous, and what similar other communities do in regards to phasing, so I'm just wrapping my head around this, so there doesn't really seem to be particular, when the public, or when myself, or other members of council maybe think of phasing, it's not necessarily what is being described here, because it doesn't seem like there is a particular order, like I said councillor Richter mentioned, of, of sequence of events, and if Booth wanted to, and Glenwood wanted to both petition and come forward, they could be potentially both working on neighborhood plans at the same time, or theoretically, all of them could then come at the same time, so there wouldn't really be a particular phase of, of working with, you know, Booth to get Booth to a particular amount of a buildup, not necessarily complete, but maybe phased where, where there's a certain percentage of, of Booth, let's say, being finished, before then you would move on to Glenwood, or, or RIN, or any of those. I think the examples of that has been seen in, in Willoughby, where we do have a bit more of a patchwork type thing, and that's where we've heard from the public in the past as well, of if there was some sort of phase that, that would make sense geographically, even just with, with services and infrastructure, with roads and those types of services, that that would make a little bit more sense, rather than the market completely driving it, where then you do have that patchwork of, of one community, or one part of a, a certain neighborhood being developed over the other. So I know there is maybe pros and cons for us to be involved in actually phasing that, and, and being a little bit more involved in the market, but I do think, as a develop, as a community develops as a whole, it might be something for us to look at, to, to have a little bit more control over the patchworkness of, of how this is gonna eventually build out, because it does, for just infrastructure of roads and all of the services alone, would make things easier if there was a little bit more of a rhyme and reason to it, rather than it just being purely market-driven, and, and that sense, so...
Yeah, so, Your Worship, just to reiterate, there are two reasons, one is market forces, market conditions, and what I mean by that is, we cannot control the, the rate, or where the development might occur within each one of those phases. Second one is the point that Mr. Bakken referenced, and that is, one area may need the, the services in another area before they can proceed, and what would be, having a, a sequential, an order to when development may occur, or the phasing of, of, of the neighborhoods, as you have described councillor Sparrow, would then mean that they would have to then go ahead, and it's really not practical, and obtain the services or the rights of way that are required to provide those services in another neighborhood before they can proceed. So the, the interconnectedness and the reliance of, of each neighborhood on the other is gonna be impractical to, to manage to some degree.
Hmm, okay.
Thank you, councillor Arneson?
Oh, yes, thank you, Your Worship, yes, through you to staff, so I, I just want to reiterate, I guess, some of the comments about this, because I'm a strong proponent of having a phased development, and I agree that probably what laypersons believe is gonna be the case, if you talk about phased development, is not what we're anticipating currently. I'd, I'd like to be proactive in looking at the balance between market forces versus the social needs of the community, because I don't necessarily see a huge upside for what our prior practice was, because it's led us to a place where a lot of people weren't not very happy with the infrastructure we were providing. So I guess, but my bottom-line question is, are we legally precluded from prohibiting development in other areas until such time as we have finished one phase?
I think that would be a better question for a lawyer, Your Worship, but based on my knowledge and experience and understanding, council could have a policy direction that would say something like, council will not consider developments in a certain neighborhood until a certain portion of development has already been completed in another neighborhood, but whether that would withstand the test of a legal challenge or not, I'm not sure.
Bakken?
The, the policy framework could be troublesome, but there's a more basic control, and that is council, through the neighborhood plan process, would effectively vote to authorize development in the neighborhood plan area. As other applications came forth, council could effectively then deny them, or defer them until that was complete, there's a practical constraint, that if council does it holistically, probably works better than a policy document, because then each application is being considered independently on its own merits, and not in accordance with a policy document that attempts to, to, I guess, put a quota on development in various areas.
Sorry, just to clarify, how long could you hold some of those in abeyance, then?
They wouldn't be really held in abeyance, I think they would, they would be, in my example, defeated, until there was an application that came forward, that actually indicated that it was appropriate, and the appropriate nature might means the, the complete supply of services from, in RIN by Booth, or some, something that actually makes it make sense, because if that occurs, there would likely be an impediment in RIN, in our hypothetical example, perhaps there's a landowner that then is holding out, and they've got 10 acres, perhaps the constraint would be eliminated by council saying to Booth, upon acquisition of those properties, and being provided for park purposes, or some community purpose, that's one of a number of potential options.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox.
Could you go back to the land use map, please?
One slide back.
Phasing, to me, is a very dangerous and slippery slope. If, if you look at this particular map, I think what we, what my interpretation of the comments...
Councillor Fox, I think we want to keep this to questions, to...
Yeah, well, I'm getting to a question.
Okay, thanks. But keep it to the question, to clarify.
Well, I think that fa, the word phasing is a, is a, is a very slippery slope, I'm gonna go back to my first statement. I think what we want to focus on is the term interfaced phasing. Do you know what I mean by that? I think what we want to do, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the applications that we received, they interface with the developed area of Brookswood. So let's give a priority, or what do you think about the idea, I gotta ask a question, so I'll go to that phasing, what do you think about the idea of interfaced phasing, where in fact, we give priority to applications that interface with the developed area of Brookswood? And if I could put a set of parentheses around that, I would say, let's look at between 32nd and 33A west of 200th, we've have one subdivision, there are other properties there. If that sector was given a priority, then that interface with the people north of 33A would be completed in a priority context, thus allowing the development to proceed south of there.
Your Worship, based on the reasons previously mentioned, I believe that would be a practical consideration that council could have without a policy. That would be something that council, at a time that council receives an application for rezoning, could then keep in mind and consider independently, and without having a written document, that somebody could then challenge legally and say, this is, is not, not allowing me to have my, my application appropriately considered by council come forward. So it could be done without the, the explicit and, and, you know, detailed reference to a policy document that says, what councillor Fox just referenced, in terms of council would have a priority over, on certain areas, based on, on adjacency, based on consideration of services, based on whatever council may wish to have. I don't think it's necessary to have a phasing document that explains one cannot proceed until, or two cannot proceed until one has been done, for council to consider adjacency issues. Those would be things to, for council to consider on a case-by-case basis as applications come forward.
So would we write that in a policy, or would that be an understood mechanism? How would we do that? Where would we put that in?
I think staff would then have the, the appropriate language and the staff recommendations coming forward, at time the application's being considered by council, in terms of, this application addresses the following needs, is in compliance with the following policy provisions, and addresses other issues that council is aware of, that are beyond a certain policy provision, that would be part of our staff report.
Okay, and, and I think, I think we, my intent is to buffer, and create the buffer of the new development with the developed area, that as a priority, that's my intent.
You, councillor Qualley?
Thanks, so the conversation around phasing, I think phasing in the context that we're talking about, removes the element of, of free market, I think, and it creates a bit of a hostage situation, you know, when you get to a place where there's, say, 80%, I have a question, I have a question.
Don't get to the questions, that's almost getting into discussion.
So when you create this environment of it, then the... So, when you create this environment of it, then the last holdout, that's no longer free market, right? So I think the front-loading of development, I think the only way to get around that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is for the municipality to pay for the infrastructure ahead of development. Is that correct? That's the only way to get around that?
That is, are you saying the only way? I think, I want to say, yes, the only way. I can't think of any other way, is for the municipality to go ahead of development, acquire the land, provide the services prior to development occurring.
So in that context, if we were to do that, we would then have to have our own plan that created all the road infrastructure, all of the other pieces, so we could acquire exactly what we needed to build the appropriate infrastructure. And then, after we've done all that, if somebody came along and created an assembly of some sort, our hands would now be tied to what we've already paid for. Is that correct? Without investing more money to change for a better plan?
We would then essentially be predetermining what a future development pattern might look like. We have a good idea as to the major trunk services, and by that I mean arterial roads, major collectors, but when you go beyond that one more sort of level of detail, with respect to, you know, local roads and local services, whether it's water, sewer, or stormwater, then we're essentially predetermining what that would look like, and would then eliminate any sort of possibility of a future, better scenario, as councillor Qualley has referenced, that may be somebody's idea, either through a land assembly or other ways.
And so the intention of this, I think, then, is, you know, the last neighborhood plan, we're 30 years in to the last neighborhood plan. What's the expected lifespan of an OCP? Because we're at 30 now. Is it expected that this will be in place for the next 30?
Well, as was mentioned during the presentation, this projected ultimate build-out of this particular community plan is 2042, which is less than 30 years away.
Right.
Twenty-five? Twenty-five.
So, in 25 years, I mean, a lot changes. So I think, okay, you've answered my question about being a bit organic within the OCP, to allow for improvements in the plan as we move along. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Thank you. My question is around, again, triggering the NP as part of this. So, I understood you to say that if a group of landowners, or developers, people come together and want to have an NP be developed, they would, they would come to council, or come to staff and make a proposal? How does that trigger the NP process? I don't really, I'm not fully grasping that.
Thank you, councillor Whitmarsh, for the question. Through your worship, there are two ways of, more, but mainly, two potential ways of having an able plan initiated. One is through council. Council could say, staff, when you're doing the 2018 budget, council would like to see sufficient funds set aside for a new enabled plan in Brookswood Fernridge, say. We would like to get Rin started as a first enabled plan. That's one way. And then staff would recommend a certain funding allocation, and then proceed with that. The other way would be by landowners initiating enabled plan, and I believe, Mr. Chu, 75%? 75% of the landowners within the area. Obviously, there will be some discussion at a staff level, to guide and help them understand the requirements, and then be ready to make a petition or a submission to council, either orally or in writing, that would then request that they would be allowed to initiate enabled plan, without any funding allocation or commitment by council, which would then mean that the developers, or the landowners, would then be required to front-end the costs, which would then be recovered at a back end, as part of neighborhood planning fees, that would then be charged against each development that occurs.
Right, okay. So, when, that's actually really helpful. So the 75% of landowners, is that 75% of the owners, or is it 75% of the land being represented by owners? Did you understand the distinction of the question?
Both.
It's both?
Both. Yeah. So, 75% of...
So, in theory, if you had, if you had two owners of the land in a whole entire area, and one wanted a neighborhood plan and one didn't, it couldn't happen?
You still couldn't, yeah. I think what we've done is we've tried to mimic the provincial legislation regarding local area services. So it's both. You can't have two people go and assemble more than 75% and then dictate the enabled plan requirement, or the initiation on the rest. You need to have 75% of the landowners having 75% of the land value initiate that.
All right, that's helpful. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll go to page four. Any questions on page four? Councillor Richter?
Yes, the slide on density.
Number two.
Could you reference that number?
It'd be number two, density.
I don't have slides.
It's number two, item number two.
Says number two.
So, yeah, next slide, there you go, that one. We don't have slide numbers on these, so it's hard.
So, in your discussion with us, you said there's no change to the developed area. But my question is, the 39,000, is that just the undeveloped area, or is that the undeveloped plus the developed?
It's both.
It's both. So, we need to specify that in the OCP, because I don't think it's clear.
It is there, Your Worship. It may not be clear enough, but it does talk about the Brookswood Fernridge Committee Plan in its entirety, having an ultimate projected population of 39,000.
Okay, but this Brookswood Fernridge OCP that we're being asked to approve is not all of Brookswood Fernridge. It's only the undeveloped part of Brookswood Fernridge.
Your Worship, that could be semantics. It is for the entire community of Brookswood and Fernridge, including the developed area. It provides for growth in the undeveloped area, but it does capture the developed area.
Okay. So, I think we heard that there's like 8,000 people in the developed area right now?
Thirteen, thirteen?
Thirteen thousand?
Or 13 in all of Brookswood?
In the developed part.
Approximately 10,000.
Ten, okay.
10,000. So, the undeveloped area is only going to be adding in 29,000 people.
Minus existing 3,000.
Yeah, there's 20, there's 13,500.
There's overall 13,000, sorry, Your Worship.
Yeah, 13,500 overall in Brookswood Fernridge, and you're saying 10,000 in the developed area?
3,000 in undeveloped area.
You know, 39 minus 13,5 would be the build-up. But some of that build-up, some of that extra population would end up in the developed area also, because there's still some parcels as well.
So for clarity, 26,000 projected new population in the undeveloped area.
Okay. So, it is both. All right. I still think we need to specify that. So, it's 39,000 minus the 13,5, and that additional population will be in place then by 2042?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, Your Worship, the reference there is section four of the committee plan. It does say, and this language could be clarified or expanded, but it currently reads, the land use plan for the Brookswood Fernridge accommodates a population of approximately 39,000.
Okay, but like I said, it's not clear if that's all of Brookswood, or just the undeveloped part. That's what I'm saying. We need to make it clear.
A word could be added, I think, to make that point. That's a good point. I have a question on that, is, there was a submission regarding the capping, the population, and as I understand, there may be some difficulties in that, but I want to know...
And that's tonight's discussion, isn't it?
No, I'm asking a question on, because it was referenced in the submissions, I'm asking a question on capping. It is, how are we at capping, you know, our different neighborhood plans? I mean, 39,000, is it going to go to 51,000, is it going to go to 20,000? And how do we ensure that, the language that was discussed, you know, we can have some assurance that that's the cap, or that's worth...
Thank you, Worship. I guess, three parts to that question. The first part is that, based on the current projections, based on the current number of people per household, this is the projection of the land use plan that council will approve is going to result in. So there's no need for a cap. If council approves this land use plan, and future councils never vary from the amendments that may come forward, then that's the number that you're going to end up with. Second part is that it would be very difficult, challenging, to actually track the actual number, because you're always talking about projections of how many people actually live in a household. Until every five years, we get Census Canada giving us the actual numbers, it's always an estimate. Currently, I think what we do is, we estimate, I think, is 1.7 people per single family, depending on the size. And then that goes up to, depending on the size of the lot, could be, you know, for 4,500 square foot lots, it could be 2.3 people, and for townhouses, it could be 2.7. So there's a projection of the number. So in terms of us actually capping it, tracking it, is going to be very difficult. And the third part of the response is that, based on our historic analysis of what has happened elsewhere in the township, we have never, I shouldn't say never, but in the majority of the enabled plans, we have not been able to reach the projection of the enabled plan in terms of the population when it was projected. So there's always a desire by those who wish to develop in the township of Langley, to not take advantage of the density provisions, but rather go the other way and build less, because of, again, market conditions being such that larger lots result in most areas, in larger profit margins. So we are unable to reach our projected numbers, for the most part.
Thanks, thanks for that. Councillor Anderson?
Yes, thank you. On the same topic, actually. So I had a couple of questions. The first one is really our ability to cap, and whether or not, I guess one has to sort of speculate about the future, because even if we're capturing a certain number, based on what we've identified as land uses, and what that would amount to, I assume that there will be some point in which we're doing infill. And so, I would like, actually, to cap the number of individuals, more or less, at a certain number, because then I just don't see that we have the control that we would like to have, and the vision of it would change. Because, for me, the small-town aspect of it would be lost, if you were to start to introduce, you know, many more people beyond that. I think, quite honestly, we're already pushing it. But my other question then is maybe kind of common sense, but if you could just explain, so, the 39,000, and that's basically working out to 12 persons per acre, that you mentioned in the presentation. So, could each of the subsequent neighborhood plans allocate a different amount? Like, is that numerically how you would do it, or is that just based on the land use itself? And, I don't know, how to couch it differently?
A future enabled plan will have to comply with the community plan. So, in terms of the land use, it can provide more detail in terms of bit more density over here, and a bit less density over here, subject to the process and council's approval. However, it cannot vary the community plan provisions. I don't know if that answers your question, but I don't think...
Okay, so, in theory, I'm thinking, if we have areas that are more sensitive, that you want to protect, could you take a portion of the population that you otherwise would put there, and shift them over, and to make them into more dense areas?
Certainly, as part of enabled plan process.
Okay. Because that seems reasonable to me, but that would be in the neighborhood plan process. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Long?
Oh, me, thank you. Yes, so, in a neighborhood plan, as has been discussed in this presentation, so you say, there's a full build-out of, say, 39,000, but it also includes what's already been developed? So what are the, do we have the numbers of what's been developed already? Population? What is the population currently, I guess? Well, you couldn't, because it's only the developed area that we're talking about, right?
Yeah. There are currently 13,500 people, approximately, residing within the Brookswood Fernridge Committee Plan area. 10,000 of whom are in the developed area, 3,500, approximately, in the undeveloped area. The 39,000 includes both areas, which means that a projected population increase of about 26,000.
Thank you. Thank you. And then councillor Long's defense, he stepped out while that was being discussed, so. We had discussed it, but you were out.
Well, it's good that you heard it first.
I know. That's right, now we don't. Councillor Fox?
Thank you. Along the discussion of density comes some intriguing housing options, which are not discussed, so I'm assuming are absent from any discussion at this point. But I'm concerned 10, 15, 20 years down the road. Laneway housing, for example, we've made no provision in here for laneway housing, which is a form of affordable housing, which in some jurisdictions has been brought in. This council cannot encumber future councils by saying unequivocally, there will be no laneway housing. Is that correct? We just leave it out of the plan, so that somewhere down the line, it may be introduced, if we're finding that densities aren't up to the numbers?
Your Worship, in theory, this council could have that restriction in the community plan. Staff would suggest that that is not the appropriate location for it, appropriate place for it. Maybe at a subsequent enabled plan level, council may wish to do that. Keeping in mind that a future council can always, although through a more complicated and cumbersome process, amend the community plan to provide for it, or not provide for it, despite what this council decides to put in the community plan. It doesn't affect a future council's ability to actually amend the community plan to reverse that decision.
I know in Murrayville, there are small sectors, small pieces of Murrayville, that have laneway housing, cottage housing, whatever terminology you want. And then, you know, across the street, or down the street, around the block, they don't have it, because it's not in their neighborhood plan, as it's outlined. So that would be the best. The other thing that I wanted to ask, and this is a discussion that you've had with council on many occasions, is densities in Yorcson, we have never reached the density provisions in Yorcson that we expected to have. Is that correct?
I believe so. Mr. Chu, yeah, do you want to comment?
Thanks.
I think everyone spoke to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. With respect to Yorcson, we actually updated the Yorcson plan to accommodate for higher density in the Yorcson, in the Willoughby Town Center area. So that is a single, kind of unique case, because we updated the neighborhood plan as a result of requests from the developers. So there was a process to update the Yorcson plan to have higher density.
Okay. That clears that. Now, we're at page five. Any questions, page five. Councillor Qualley?
Sorry, I just had one question way back a minute, sorry. To councillor Fox's comment, it doesn't specify laneway housing, but isn't there provision for a bunch of other descriptions? Not exactly laneway, but it's in here, right? Cottage home. And sorry, I can't find it. And I know you know this like the back of your hand, so.
Yeah, so there's a policy in under, for example, Single Family Three, looking at exploring manufactured home parks, detached and duplex strata developments, other cottage housing, pocket neighborhoods, all to be detailed through neighborhood plans.
So that cottage housing, then, is really, like you said, this whole document is meant to be a little bit more organic, to give flexibility for things that will evolve, right? So, we're not precluded from considering what councillor Fox suggested? Okay. I knew it was in there, I just couldn't remember the language. Thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you. Okay, so now, page five, which starts at slide 13, 14, and 15. Clear the queue. Any questions? Councillor Richter?
Yeah, the bottom slide, what the community said about density. I note in the preamble...
Oh, slide 15, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I note in the preamble that you said this is one of the most intensive public engagement processes the township's ever gone through, and I think it really has been. But you did say that there were over 1,000 questionnaires that came in from residents and participants at these open houses. Do we have a summary of what was said at those open houses, anywhere?
I think the summary was provided to council.
Yes.
Yes. Had summaries.
At the end of each phase, for phases one to four, we provided an engagement summary for each phase to council, and the information is also available on the project website.
Okay. And did you break that down like you did in this presentation by the number of people responding to each area of concern? Like the number of people with issues around density?
No, I don't think so. No, we didn't provide numerical details. We give more qualitative rather than quantitative clarifiers, for lack of a better phrase.
Okay, so maybe it's unfair, but off the top of your head, how many people were upset about density?
Okay, so for the quotation that's here, Phase Three Engagement, that reflects 47 comments that we got, and roughly they were split, if you can split a seven in half. So roughly half were supportive, felt more density was appropriate, and the other half felt that it should be the same or less than what the 87 plan provides.
Thank you. Any else on page five? Okay, clear the queue. Move to page six. Anything on page six? This would be slide, I don't know, starts number three, I think, nope. That's, that's the third slide, so it's two slides up now, that. Anything, yeah, Councilor Richter, which slide?
Okay, the small, single-family lot slides under 7,000 square feet. Four supported and 23 were concerned about it. When you were discussing it, you said the 4,000 square foot lots were proposed to provide a mix of housing. That's the main point of it, right? It's not to protect trees, it's to provide a mix of housing.
The intent, your worship, is to protect trees, but also what it does, it allows for a mix of housing forms and types. Not just 4,000, but anything less than 7,000 between 7 and 4, so 4, 5, and 6.
So in the plan, exactly how much 4,000 square, or how many 4,000 square foot lots are contemplated?
Based on the review of the information available in terms of treescape, in terms of reviewing aerial photography, orthophotos, those of that nature, it is anticipated that 10%, I believe, 10% of the overall area designated for single-family may be able to take advantage of, of the, the provision to protect trees, therefore have smaller lots, and that's how the 39,000 population has been arrived at.
Okay, do we specify that 10% anywhere?
Currently, no, it is not.
Is it something that can be specified in the plan?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Fox?
Actually, that was my question to Mr. Seifi was, can we specify a specific percentage of the land use in that designation in that neighborhood plan that could be considered for 4,000 square foots or, okay? Secondly, are we stuck on 4,000, or can we raise that to 5,000?
It, it doesn't need to be raised, it already does allow for less than 7,000 down to 4,000, which includes 5 and 6.
So if a, if a, a land use application came in and the tree conservation area was a little bit smaller, we could cluster 5,000 square foot lots as opposed to another land use in another area that came in with a larger cluster of trees or a larger environmentally sensitive area where 4,000 square foots would, would be allowed?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the other question is, and this is jumping a few slides, but we're on this topic, sorry. When we talk about a piece of land, which is, let's say SF1, or, yeah, use, three, three, which is 7,000 square feet, so it's X amount of land equals X amount of 7,000 square foot lots. So if we said 4,000 square foot lots was the same number as the 7,000 square foot lots, do you understand what I'm saying? Is that possible? They're nodding their head, okay, that's, thank you.
Councilor Long?
Yeah, and that does come up in the latest slide, so we'll ask that again, because there was one slide that showed an example of clustering. A question I had was, okay, so we're talking first of all only about SF3 for this smaller than 7,000 lots, let's be clear on that, right? And then the suggestion of 10% came up because that's the figure that you're kind of using. But could it be any figure? Could it be 5%, 7%? And what would be the ramifications, I imagine, at each of those, but...
Well, the, the ramification would be that it will affect the population projection.
It will be ramifications, but can council, can, at the moment, there is no percentage in the plan.
That's correct.
And one could be put in, you, you've said, but that number that could be put in, it could be whatever council decides it wanted to be, but it will affect the numbers.
Yes, it will.
Okay, and then why, all right, so again about this figure of 4,000, you know, I guess there's, there are ramifications to all these questions, but there's been a lot of talk about 4,000 not necessarily being the appropriate number, but I wonder what would happen if you made it 4,500, or 4,700, or 5,000?
Again, your worship, the provision doesn't preclude the possibility of other smaller lots, including 5,000, or 4,500, or 6,000?
No, but I think there's a minimum, the, the minimum threshold currently is set at 4,000 in the proposed plan, and I guess...
The smallest.
Yeah.
That's correct. Subject to enabled planning process. You guys want to add something?
Just like to add, maybe provide a little bit of insight as to the genesis of the 4,000 square foot lots. When we were in discussion with the community, one thing that came out really clear was the fact that people would not want to see any compact lot in Brookswood Furnrich. So 4,000 square feet is basically the smallest size until we get down to compact lots. And the 4,000 mark is basically consistent with the existing lot size in the zoning bylaw, so we have 4,000, 5,000, 6,000, and 7,000 square foot lots.
Currently call a 4,000 square foot lot a compact lot. It'd have to be 3,995 kind of a thing.
But no, 4,000 is just basically when we tested the concept with the community, it's, it's the, the lowest possible tolerance at that level.
Single-family compact lots can go as low as 2,500? 2,000?
Okay, thank you. Councilor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'm wondering once again about the 4,000 square foot lot, and just for interest's sake, I wonder if you had considered the Surrey model of what they did instead? So they didn't actually prescribe a square foot amount of lot for their cluster residential development, but rather they did what Mr. Seifi is describing, where they have the aerials of all the areas where they want to protect the high-value trees, and then they have a certain percentage of those areas. So, but, so that would effectively decouple that single-family three from an actual minimum size lot, and it would be more relative to the actual, I guess, focus of, of trying to protect trees in specific areas.
Your worship, again, we have to keep in mind that, that staff has taken all of the input from, from all different stakeholders and tried to reconcile and come up with something that makes sense. Going back to what Mr. Chu just said, we've also heard from residents who, who prefer to have the ability, the provision built into the community plan to go as low as 4,000, nothing lower, but to have as the ability at least built in there for council to consider 4,000 up to 4,000, or down to 4,000. So not having that provision would, would not provide for it in, in the future.
Okay, I, I guess my other thought that's related to that is just to try and narrow the scope of the application, because there is really a large volume that's got the single-family three potentially. So I know it's done for two reasons, so you have a range of housing options and also to save trees, but I think part of the community concern was how that's going to play out may potentially over time with the large volume of that being available.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Richter?
Yeah, just to go on with what Councilor Arneson was saying, it doesn't say anywhere right now in the OCP that these 4,000 square foot lots would not be the dominant form of housing. Can we add that in, that the 4,000 square foot lots would not be dominant?
Your worship, I, I, we could strengthen language even further, but I think I would suggest that, that having it as a possibility with the intent of preserving trees as a potential provision is implicitly saying that they won't be the predominant, but rather 10,000 and 7,000 would be the predominant, this being an exception to those being provided for in the plan. But if council wishes to make that language even more clear...
Yeah, I, I think because the vision is that all the land that's earmarked single-family three will end up as square foot, as 4,000 square foot houses, or lots.
And, and, and that's where that percentage might, might come into play, is that helpful?
If I can add, your worship, we've got 39,000 for the entire community, we've got roughly 26,000 that could accommodate in the undeveloped area. So when you use that as one of your parameters, that already is setting limits on how much of that single-family three can accommodate. It just, there's, there's not enough population number to have everything designated single-family three, like, not even close. So that, that's one consideration. And just to raise again, and I know you're aware of this, but one of the key features why we've structured the language we've done for single-family two, single-family three is we've tried through this whole process and would like to continue to do so going forward with neighborhood plans being evidence-based, so making decisions based on evidence. And right now, we don't have, in our opinion, enough detailed evidence in the different neighborhoods in terms of exactly the, the range of tree species that we have, the number of trees, where they are, where their high-value ones may be, and it's through that evidence gathering through a neighborhood plan process, then you can say, okay, oh, so this is what we're working with. So what makes sense for this community, given the population parameter that it has to work within? How many of those lots, does it make sense for that particular neighborhood to be 4,500, or 4,000, or 5,000, or 6,000, or so forth? And when you go back to the original kind of foundational statements within the vision and the guiding principles about providing for a range of housing, again, to me, that is another framework providing statement that not everything designated for single-family three is intended to be the same thing. It's...
Yeah, but I, I have problems with that phrase, the, the range of housing, because in my mind, I think you're trying to do, be everything to everyone, and I, I think it came through pretty clear at the public hearing that we need parts of the township that aren't like Willoughby, and this is one of them. Anyway, I'll keep that for tonight. Now, you did say that you tested the square, 4,000 square foot lots with the community. When did you do that? How did you do it? How much input did you get on it?
I believe it was during Phase Three of the process, and we also had some workshops with the community where we talked about medium to high-density housing form.
Because there was an awful lot of feedback that came in, in the written and in the verbal, that basically said, where did these 4,000 square foot lots come from? It's pulled it out of the air. And that's the way they were seeing it, that they had been to public hearings, they'd been to the meetings, and they, they never heard of it before.
Mr. Nelson has some information.
Certainly, through your worship, I've got in my hands here the Phase Three Engagement summary.
Yeah, okay.
And there were a number of public events that we held in that, as that part of the phase, and just a couple of comments I can make on it. So one of them, we held a, a digital engagement, engagement pilot. We ran a survey that we asked people to respond to, advertised for it, and we got over 700 unique responses based on that. And one of the questions was around looking at opportunities and incentives for residential cluster development. Only 23% of the folks that responded of those 700-plus didn't like it, the remainder did. And then in the public open house that followed, we, again, we provided a bit more detail. We both spoke of the four, the range of potential clustering, lot sizes between 4 and 7,000 was raised on multiple panels, including the land use designation descriptions, and also on a, an example of which you saw in this slide presentation of showing the lot, traditional 7,000 and concept around preservation of an area and doing the 4,000. And again, we had 550-plus feedback forms completed, and the feedback form questions specific around the cluster development that showed that range in that specific example with the 4,000 square foot lots, we had 36% that disagreed, and the remaining 74% liked the idea, or 64, sorry, my math.
36% of how many in that one?
So there was 550 feedback forms that were completed, plus, and, yeah, 64% were in support of it, the other 36% disagreed.
Okay, and did you test 5,000 square feet at all, or was it just four is what you tested?
Just a conceptual idea that we put on the table, used the smallest lot as a way to test it, but also to indicate that would be the, the basement or the minimum that this concept would be looking at.
Okay, and the slide that you just had up there of the redwoods, how big are those lots in there?
It's a 4,000 square foot subdivision.
Those are all 4,000?
Those are 4,000 square feet, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Long?
Can I see the next slide? Because that was prompting my question, and I think it goes back to what Councilor Fox had asked, how come we came up with these numbers? I guess it's because you put the 4,000 square foot lots in the buildable area, but if you've got 47 lots to begin with, wouldn't you make 47, I mean, wouldn't have to, but could you consider just making 47 lots in the next one?
Yes, you could.
This is an example, and I looked at this, slide two, a little bit confusing because you got 54 and 47, but basically it would be conventional development of 47, you really wouldn't go higher than that in a cluster situation, or would you? There's some confusion there.
Yeah, not necessarily. So the intent of the illustration there was to show not only that you could preserve a noteworthy stand of trees on the one hand, but theoretically, you could actually get smaller lots and more lots on that same site in exchange. So basically, you're giving you this example, we're giving you a few extra lots in exchange for the preservation of the tree stands.
It's something council would consider, neighborhood plan or development, okay. Does that help? Okay, so that was page six, so slide 19 would be the next one, page seven, and this is, we now have some excerpts. Yes, so 19 is the next, 19, 20, 21. Yes, now I've got Councilor Davis next.
Thank you. The, the wording, it says here, concerned, there was 24, needs definite changes. How, the wording, to, I guess my, my question is, how would we go about changing the wording to make it more defined? On an OCP, if you have it, maybe if it's more defined, then you won't have so much problems later where everyone wants to change it and stretch it around and that sort of thing. I just would wonder, what were your comments on the wording?
Your worship, as, as previously discussed in the presentation, staff don't recommend making any changes based on the following. One is that this is a, a document that's supposed to be guiding development, it doesn't mandate it, it just guides. So it's a guiding document that provides a future vision over a long term, over 25 to 30 years. As such, staff believes that it should be permissive in its language and not restrictive. There should be, certainly, there should be parameters, a framework, conditions, when those things could be achieved, but staff suggests that changing every should to must does not make sense, although that's up to council if they wish to change that.
Yeah, okay, just sometimes if you try to guide an elephant through a china shop, it's a little difficult. I'm just, I think, you know, as time goes on, just like Willoughby... I'm just, I think, you know, as time goes on, just like Willoughby, or no, maybe I won't, okay, question. I just wanted your, so you have no recommendations on changing the wording?
Not changing it. And the other aspects, sorry, Counsel Davis, your worship, the other aspect is, other than what I said earlier, is that most of the language that is considered by some members of the public, some members of the public, to be too vague or too permissive or too broad or generic relates to the development permit area provisions. And as the presentation, again, I believe it was Mr. Nelson who said that, it is intentionally left like that for council, a future council, to be able to determine the benefits of another goal versus what is currently known at this stage about a possibility of a future scenario. So when more detail is available, we don't want to be restrictive, restricting a future council's ability to decide that something prevails over something else if that council of the future date decides that's the right approach. If we were to change the language, something like that would then trigger a committee plan amendment, which is a whole different process.
So just in conclusion, the, maybe more definite wording would be in the neighborhood plan instead of the OCP?
It would provide more definitive language, for sure, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Richter.
Okay, I just want to get clarification. So an OCP is a visionary document. Now, the language not being restrictive but permissive, is that required by law under the Local Government Act, or is this just staff preference?
It is not required by law, your worship. This is just a guiding document. It can be as minimal as council wishes or as restrictive as council wishes.
So there's nothing stopping us from putting more restrictive language into this OCP?
Not legally speaking, your worship.
Yeah. And the reason I raise this is there's a lot of people that think perhaps we should have more restrictive language in all our OCPs to stop some of the things that are going on. So we can tighten up the language, there's nothing prohibiting us from doing that. Okay, great, thank you.
Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. You know, further to that, I understand that we don't want to limit too much future council's ability because this is the overarching document. But I found an example, actually, that I had submitted because I think it really refers to something what I consider bottom-line language. There are certain things, I think, that we have to protect. And I do believe in prescriptive language, so I'm just going to give you the example that I found that was in the draft document. So it says, "These policies are intended to ensure large and medium-sized lots, single-family houses for lands furthest away from the centers, and to encourage the retention of significant trees and other natural features through residential cluster development." So I just changed up that language, did a bit of wordsmithing. "These policies will ensure that large and medium-sized lot, single-family housing for lands furthest away from the centers results in the retention of trees." To me, that is the kind of thing that I would like to spend some time on to make sure that that language is actually strong enough to reflect the core values, I think, of what we're trying to preserve in the OCP. So that was just my comment about, you know, that aspect of it.
Those are things that we can do through reading, through the amendment process, but I think staff have been very helpful in explaining their reasoning for the document that we have before us. Counsel Fox?
Yeah, I went and spent a couple of hours with one of the submissions that we received. I think there was three or four that were pretty much identical with this particular document and highlighted and said, you know, changing a may to a must and so on and so Some of them made sense and were quite applicable, others were not quite applicable. So the holistic context of changing every may to must is not realistic in the sense of the wordsmithing piece. For example, the word "consider" is in here a number of times, but there's "consider" with a parameter or a specificity associated with that "consider." If you take "consider" by itself, it's fairly, you know, it's not very definitive. But if you put it with "this condition," the definitive element is taken care of. And so I think we have to be very careful about a holistic context and wordsmithing because it can bind future councils, as you say. If you, there's some wording that I would recommend we change, but not holistically. And I think that, I mean, I went through every must-should in this document, and, you know, I wasn't an English major, but I taught long enough to know that sometimes the connectivity is more important than the word itself, so.
From that, I'm gathering the question is, that was the intent, is that you had the parameters? So that, you know, it does restrict council in very, very significant ways, right? So lower, a lower range and a higher range, you can't go beyond those. And so then considering, but it's within that range. So that's what you did? Okay, thanks. Okay, so that's page seven. We'll rocket right on to page eight. Page eight, and so the slides 22 through 23, 22. I know some of these things are starting to get a little repetitious, but 20, 24. Counsel Davis.
Thank you. On this tree protection, you know what, maybe I'm, by law, we're only allowed to, the question is, we're only allowed to fine if somebody cuts a tree down. Is, geez, it came and went. Can we not make it? Can we change, can we do anything about that in third reading? Can we say that, in your knowledge, has any development been taken, if somebody cuts a tree down and we're, and then we're allowed to, are we allowed to take their development application away, other than just fining them?
Your worship, the answer is yes, but to put that in writing creates a bit of a challenge because council must consider every application on its own merits independently. So council cannot have a policy that would say, as an example, if you have prematurely cut down your trees, you're in effect going to get a rejection from council. Council must consider every application. As part of that consideration, council can either approve the application, deny it, or add additional conditions. Those conditions could include, ah, Mr. Developer, you have prematurely removed some trees, you will plead ignorance or forgiveness, but having said that, council wishes to add other conditions because of the premature clearing, and those conditions could be added at time of consideration of rezoning application, not as a policy provision, because then that effectively fetters council's ability to independently consider each application on its own merits.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Long? Thank you. And under that slide, it says tree protection by law, and there were nine general concerns. Do we have any idea what kind of concerns they were? Because in most of the slides, it's specific as to what it is. Here you have tree protection and so forth, but under the general, do we have any idea of what, you mean they just didn't want one at all, or?
I know one was that, at least, but I'm not sure. I'm looking at Mr. Nelson or Mr. Chu.
There were various comments that were made regarding the tree protection by law, so we captured in our general, but yeah, most of them spoke to some of the sub-elements that are all listed below in terms of fines, yeah, other measures that could be put in place to recoup or to, yeah, ameliorate or mitigate if the rules weren't followed appropriately.
And then in terms of the ability, only in the Government Act, to fine $500, for instance, but then there is an ability to go to 10,000, but it's only if you go to court. So could the policy say that the township will always take you to court or find, how can we strengthen that? Because that's going to come up for sure again. At the moment, $500 is not a bad deal. You probably get, you probably get more than that for the tree. Mr. Back in the legal.
Technically, it could be $500 per occurrence, so if it was a cluster of 20 trees, that's $500 per tree. That's the benefit of that system. And traditionally, when you go for the court system, then there's a prosecutor in the entire process. Council could direct that staff always seek the highest fine, but in my example, the court would likely not look at it as being each incident, they'd look at it as being one incident with 20 incidents of damage, and consequently, you'd probably face a fine of $10,000 as being your maximum.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. So further to Counselor Davis's point, I was hoping, and this may be a better discussion for final reading, but the language to be included would be more of a deterrent, an inexpensive deterrent, if you let proponents know in advance that council had the unilateral ability to deplot, to, sorry, to deny their development application should it be found based on evidence that they had preemptively cleared that. Is there a problem with putting that language in our actual bylaw?
I don't think it's a problem, your worship, but I suggest that it doesn't have to be part of the community plan process. It could be just an independent resolution of council, not related to community plan.
Then it applies.
That applies everywhere.
Okay, thank you. Counsel.
Oh, sorry, one more.
I was asked for clarification on that.
Sure.
So if it doesn't have to be part of the community plan, where, would that be a policy? Where would that come under? Because a community plan will become a bylaw, so where would that be embedded?
It could either be a policy with language that is, as Counsel Arneson described, a bit more, I guess discretionary, guiding, or intentionally broad in its scope, or it could be a simple resolution of council that just essentially states what council's position is on a particular issue, such as premature clearing of trees.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, my secondary question was about the interest in having this bylaw applied to the entire area, the developed and undeveloped area. So that wasn't something that you covered?
I believe it was part of the presentation. The intent of the tree protection bylaw is to prevent clearing that is happening, may be happening, in anticipation of development.
Oh, okay.
Given the fact that the area that is already developed, there is limited infill opportunities, but staff has looked at that, and it's actually very limited infill opportunities, and the clearing would be essentially, or has been, based on experience, limited to the building envelope, not beyond the building envelope based on the zoning bylaw setback requirements. So with that in mind, the bylaw currently being suggested, recommended to council is for the undeveloped area only, to prevent clearcutting in the undeveloped area.
Yes, my personal preference, actually, is to cover the whole area.
Questions?
Thank you.
Just a couple of other points, your worship, on that. I guess one would be that it's inconsistent with the rest of the township. We don't currently have something like that elsewhere in the township. And the second part is that I believe this was something that was considered by council maybe seven, eight years ago, and it was opposed by the majority of the residents in the area, and as such, council did not proceed with that. So staff has taken that as a bit of a direction as to what council may wish to do.
Counsel Richter.
Yeah, again, the letters that came in, and there were a number of them, I have a count of about 14 here, wanted more teeth in the tree bylaw, they wanted higher fines in the tree bylaw, and they wanted a three-strike rule, which would be to revoke their development permit if they cut down more than three trees unauthorized. Are we able to put that in? Like a three-strike rule, for example, is that?
Your worship, again, it is not recommended to be put in a community plan. It is something that council has the prerogative to do anyway, regardless of the policy being in place or not. And having it written down in a policy, staff believes would create a potential legal issue in terms of fetching councils.
Okay, but in the community plan, it states how much they value trees, particularly the towering conifers. I mean, a 100-foot tree is worth way more to the community than 500 bucks, and the loss of that tree is worth way more to the community. So how can we do better to protect it? Someone spoke at, I don't know if it was in the public hearing or at some point, they had said that in Vancouver, someone was fined $100,000 for taking trees out.
That would have been through a court process.
Okay, so Vancouver can do it through the court process?
Well, so can we.
Can we do it too?
Yes, certainly.
Okay.
Vancouver has their own charter.
They do.
And we are talking two separate bylaws here. There's the 5,300 and 5,301, so I think, so you know. Counsel Fox, I had you.
Yeah, I just don't want to get ahead of ourselves here, and in the context of moving from the undeveloped to the developed and the bigger picture, the holistic picture here, I think we need to just focus on what we're talking about here, which is the OCP for the undeveloped area. This doesn't mean that in the future, we can't, can't look at how a tree protection process can't be put into the developed area as well, even though there's infill. So I think that the way, I understand that the value that trees are given in this area, and I think that staff have done a fairly good job of trying to manage that.
That's a question, okay. Okay, so we'll move on to page nine. Clear the queue, page nine, I think on page nine, I think we've gone through that pretty good. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I noted in your presentation that you said the zoning or the anticipated future zoning for Cedar Creek Estates was consistent with the 1987 plan. But does it have to be consistent with the 1987 plan?
Your worship, just against the point of clarification, the language should be that it's consistent with the 87 plan in not designating that particular parcel as a manufactured home park. That's the consistency.
Designate it.
It could, certainly.
Yeah, because it doesn't seem fair that that's left out. There are four that are protected and one that isn't.
Just questions.
Could be consistent.
So we could, we could put that language into the OCP.
Certainly, yeah.
Counsel Arneson?
Yes, sir. Further to that, then, does that mean that, would there be an opportunity, if you change the zoning, just to give it a grandfathered use historically, that area? Would that provide any further protection for the residents?
I don't believe grandfathering provision would apply.
Based on historical use despite the zoning?
At any point, council can, can consider a zoning application of that parcel despite the designation. The zoning is what prevails. The zoning is what gives entitlement to a landowner, and the current zoning is manufactured home park. That won't change unless and until the landowner comes forward with an application for reconsideration. At that time, council will then say, the rezoning, does it comply with the community plan designation or doesn't it? And if it doesn't, then there's an added burden on the applicant to demonstrate why council should vary its community plan designation.
But in theory, then, you could just, without designating it with the split zoning, just leave it as it is?
That could be done, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Long? Just want to clarify, then, it could be, there was a slide somewhere that talked about it being split. I guess at the plan, the current plan, that's the way it shows. So the idea being that the property that fronts 200 Street is not appropriate perhaps to be a mobile home park, because it's right on 200 Street, and I think there was talk about, yeah, there it is, and that there could be some subsidized housing perhaps even in the front part. So it is possible, then, to take that piece and designate some of it, maybe 80% as an example, as mobile home park, and the 20% that abuts 200 Street would be a higher density? It hasn't been recommended in the plan.
It could be designated to whatever council wishes it to be. We're just demonstrating why it was designated the way it has been in the draft plan, keeping in mind the consistency with the 87 plan and, and other sort of aspects of what we're trying to achieve holistically overall.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Is there anything preventing an owner of a mobile home park that's protected in an OCP from coming forward at some future point in time and asking for an amendment to the OCP? No. So why don't we just protect it in the OCP, and if they want to go to the trouble of amending the OCP in the future, let them, let them do it?
That's up to council. Okay, so Counsel Fox?
But the corollary to that is if we, in the existing 1987 plan, it is designated MH- in the existing 1987 plan, it is designated MH1 presently.
No, no, it's designated.
It is currently zoned manufactured home park. In the 87 plan, it is designated as a single-family three. So 7,000 square foot lots.
If we were to designate it in the 2017 update as MH1, are we open to legal challenge by the owner?
I don't think so, but I suppose anything is possible.
Has anybody consulted with them at any point with respect to this?
They have been part of the process, as have been many other landowners in the area. Certainly, staff has consulted with them. The information that has been passed on to staff is that there aren't currently any development plans, redevelopment plans, for that parcel. And the desire is to maintain the existing designation based on the 87 plan. What has been added as a split zone is based on a technical rationalization that staff put forward. One, proximity to 200 Street as a major arterial corridor. Two, provision of more affordable housing. Three, a potential for future redevelopment that accommodates relocating some of the residents to another part of the same development. If you have the entire parcel, a single family, it would be virtually impossible to accommodate them, given all the financial constraints within the same development. So having a portion of the site designated as a higher form of density that provides for relocating the owners at a future date to another location on the same parcel.
So, but the owner could come back to future council and make that request based upon a plan to maybe relocate those people at the front into the back, whatever, however that works, and council could reconsider that.
A future, council could be reviewing or considering any kind of application by an owner, either inconsistency or contradiction of the committee plan designation.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we want to page 10, that's slide 28 to 30. Any questions on page 10 slides?
What's the first one there?
Clear the queue, all right. Move on.
Hang on.
You got something there? Give me a second. Planning process in Cedar Creek. Council Richter.
Oh, no, I was, I think I jumped the gun. I want to get to number seven. No, not number seven, number eight, cluster development.
Okay.
Okay, 30, so we're moving on to number eight. So Council Richter, you got the floor. Slide 32.
Yeah. Is there anything prohibiting us from changing the grid patterns of roads in order to protect trees?
Nothing prohibiting us.
But we don't always have to lay roads out in perfectly perpendicular lines.
Couple of things to keep in mind, Councilor. One is the desire, not absolute need, but practical purposes of trying to have a development pattern that takes half of the road from one property and then the other half from the property next to it. In other words, having the central line of the road be on the property line such that the burden for the road dedication doesn't fall on one property only, that the burden is shared by two adjacent parcels, then that's one thing. The other one is sun exposure. Obviously, east-west pattern of road connectivity provides for more sun exposure in our climate. And the existing infrastructure where they are and how to make connections to those things. So those are the practical considerations. But at the enabled planning stage, even at the enabled plan, we typically don't provide that level of detail for a local road network because, again, based on the discussions we had earlier when Council Qualley asked a question about, you know, sort of a future application, potentially subject to land assembly, that could change. So if the larger the assembly, the more flexibility in terms of determining the road layout.
Okay, because, I mean, I look at examples of subdivisions, like Tall Timbers, where they don't have, like, traditional grid patterns of roads, and they saved a lot of trees there. So is that something that we can put language in to foster?
Certainly, that could be added. I would suspect, it's before my time, I don't know, but I suspect some of that curvature, horizontal curvature, is because of the topography, the vertical sort of creek setback and creek issues, as opposed to necessarily saving trees. But that's just a guess.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Council Fox.
Yeah, and to that extent, I know in Latimer, when we talked about the road configurations, the east-west part was very important for energy conservation. And if we're talking about the BC Government Step-Up Program, then I think that we have to consider that in how we focus our, is that, am I correct in that? Yeah? Question with respect to the previous slide. You indicated that you had talked to the City of Langley and the City of Surrey. And I saw a response from the City of Langley, they want to be consulted and so on and so forth. Have we received a response from the City of Surrey? Did I miss it, or they're still, it's still in progress?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. That was one of the consultation mechanisms that I think we talked about. And we did receive, I think, a couple of other municipal jurisdictions' responses. Did we not receive one from the Qualand? I'm not, I can't remember. No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for page 11, move on to page 12. Some of the slides we've seen already. Page 12 is slide, we're looking at 34, 35. Council Richter.
Yes, the conservation of the environment slide. You mentioned when you were doing your slideshow that we can't show specific parks and schools. Why is that?
Your Worship, because the ownership doesn't belong to the township, so it's not public land. And the private landowners would argue that we are affecting the market value of their property by designating their property as something that we don't have any control over. So they would submit either a legal challenge or a request for us to actually purchase that property.
So just by putting in the little ovals, you're saying in that area, there must be?
That's correct.
But where in that area is up to the development?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council Fox?
Yeah, if I could ask a question about a comparator, I think it was, it's southwest Latimer, is that? Yeah, where we actually said to those people in the development industry, you must provide a school site before you can proceed with any further, is that correct?
Your Worship, that's a typical requirement in all our neighborhoods. Enabled plans typically say that you must acquire a school site and a park site, neighborhood park site, prior to development proceeding. And there are mechanisms and ways that security could be accomplished. But that's a typical requirement of a enabled plan.
So that message would go to the neighborhood plan. Can you go up one slide? The land that's treed there, that's owned by the township?
Yes, it is.
So it does a couple of things. Number one, it buffers the, in this case, the golf course, the ALR. But do you see where, okay, this is an example of a cluster home context. So what we've done here is originally, and there's a property line there, I think 9264 is identified, which is obviously was a bigger property when it was originally perceived, and then the one to the north. So you see the connectivity. When we talk about cluster homes, do you see us, the connectivity exceeding just the one singular property and trying to connect, you know, maybe two, three, four properties, back to back, side to side, that sort of thing? Is that, would a priority, if we were to limit it, say, let's just say, I think you said 10% to cluster homes, would a priority be given to a cluster home concept that included more than one property to save a greater stand of trees or environmental protection?
Yep, Mr. Nelson just highlighted a section for me in one of the policy provisions that talks about the planned process should incorporate environmental network planning.
Okay, so that, and that's what's perceived as network planning then?
Yep.
Okay, so it's greater than the single piece of property, encouraging the more property owners to be involved. Okay, thank you.
Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, could you just go down a couple, one, yeah, this one. So in this slide here, it says updated park and open space policies that provide 100 acres of additional park and 31 miles, 50 kilometers of new trails. So in light of your comment about publicly owned land versus privately owned land, is this, is the policies here, is that based on land that the township owns, that we would turn into parks and we would turn into trails? Or is there an assumption that through the neighborhood planning process, that we may require some development of private land to include the consideration of parks and trails?
It's the latter. We would seek to basically assemble 100 acres' wealth of parks and school site as part of the development process going forward in the next 25 years or so.
Okay, and so that includes these trails as well? Same concept? Okay, thank you.
Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. Could you just go back to the prior slide, please? The one with Walnut Grove and showing the clustering development there? Because it's kind of illustrative. I know this is all in one jurisdiction. So it goes to a question about whether or not we in the City of Surrey are looking to see what's happening on our collective borders there, to see if there's anything that they're protecting in their environmentally sensitive areas that would be contiguous with what we might anticipate are areas to protect.
During the neighborhood plan process, we will be coordinating with them to map out the connectivity issue. It's just that we're doing a mid-level plan, coming from the township-wide OCP, zooming into Broxwood Furnridge, in this case. Later on, when we have the authorization to go ahead with a neighborhood planning process, we would be, you know, having regular conversations with the City of Surrey and adjacent municipalities. That is also crucial as part of the urban tree canopy study that it's basically embedded in the proposed plan.
Or is that a metro initiative? I just...
No, it would be part of the neighborhood plan, environmental, basically gearing and updating the environmental inventory of the area.
Okay, thank you.
Council Richter? Oops, Council Richter.
Yeah, just to pick up on that, the environmental inventory, can it be done at the community plan level?
Yes, it could be done at the community plan level. It's just that the technology of doing such work is ever-evolving, and the cost is actually quite high. And in this case, our recommendation is to basically do it at the neighborhood plan process where developments will, again, pay for part of the cost based on each neighborhood planning area.
Okay, but can't we, like, front-end cost that and then charge them fees when we get to the neighborhood plan?
Yeah, so the environmental part has two major kind of areas that I see it. The first part is the riparian area. So we'll have to basically update our riparian or water course classification mapping. The other aspect is urban tree canopy. And that is done either by computer or ground truth or both. That is the costly item. And it takes a long time. And we're just still trying to figure out the total cost information. I believe only two municipalities and maybe two consultants in the area who can do the work.
And there's also the practical consideration of being able to access private property to be able to undertake such inventory.
Well, with the new methodology, they're using satellite information, dropping what they call LiDAR dots.
The ground truthing, I said you said ground truthing.
The ground truth.
You cannot do ground truthing
That's right.
unless you have either a willing partner or an application.
Okay, what about setting a specific parameter for conservation? So could we put in the OCP that 30% of the area will be set aside for conservation purposes?
Yeah, again, we have no science, we have no evidence to base that number on at this point because, simply because we still have to start the neighborhood plan process.
Yeah, that's maybe one of the reasons why we should do this before we get to the neighborhood plan process. But we could put a percentage in the OCP, right?
It would be possible in theory, but it would be arbitrary based on the information available.
And the redwoods picture there, why did we want that land? I mean, we got it, obviously, from development, but what were we protecting? Is there a water course in there?
Yeah, I actually walked the entire area with the last planner who did the work. Yes, it has very high environmental value. Just to the north of this picture is actually a very significant water course. And these trees are, I would not say as old and as big as the famous redwoods, but they are very significant tree stands.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, move to page 13, slide 37 to 39. Any questions on page 13?
13, provision of roads, oh, right.
Any questions? Move on to the next page. Okay, move on to 14. And slide, okay, push your button, there we go. Okay, Council Fox, were you on page 14? Hang on, Council Fox, were you on page 14?
Yeah, roads and infrastructure.
I'll get Council Richter's off.
Yeah, roads and infrastructure, too.
Which one are you on? Page 13, okay, so Council Fox. So you're on 13, slide number 39, so Council Fox was first. Okay, Council Fox.
Parking and traffic?
Are you on roads and infrastructure?
Well, no parking.
Okay, Council Richter, you go ahead. And deal with slide 39.
Okay, roads and infrastructure. The issue of 204th Street, between 32nd Avenue and 36th Avenue. Do we have to put a road in there?
So the question is, should we put a road through 204th, 204th Street alignment between 36 and 40?
36?
32nd and 36, sorry. So currently, there is a very attractive off-road trail along that alignment. The recommendation in the proposed plan is based on the 2009 master transportation plan.
And what is, it indicates roadway?
A roadway, that's correct.
A two-lane collector.
Okay.
Yeah, but there were several letters that came in asking us not to put that through.
Are there options, I think, Council?
There are already insufficient north-south connectivity points, Your Worship. The preliminary traffic impact analysis has demonstrated. So as part of the enabled planning process, this will be further investigated. There may be alternatives that could be provided. But based on the master transportation plan, that is currently what the needs have been demonstrated to be, to support the existing as well as the future population.
Thank you, Council Fox, on the next page then.
Yeah, one of the issues, if I understand that correctly, is obviously the connectivity there. And it's already identified in 2009, which has been passed. And I think it was passed unanimously by this council, was it not? Yeah. So one of the questions I have in, if we start playing with street alignments and so on and so forth, we interfere with street parking. And we want, I think one of the things that we've heard over and over and over is inadequate parking in Willoughby. So my understanding, when we talk about roads and infrastructure and roads in particular, all the roads that are planned in this particular area, Furnridge, the undeveloped area, will allow for parking on both sides of the roads, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so as soon as we start putting in a lot of cul-de-sacs and so on and so forth, then we're going to interfere with the ability, or not the ability, but the quantity of on-street parking. quantity of on-street parking. A straight road will allow for greater on-street parking. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So one of the things that we have to consider is if we start changing a road design for a tree or six trees, then we could affect street parking. I mean, where you gain on one hand, you lose on the other hand. And that could be a consideration at the time of the neighborhood plan, is how much street parking are we removing because of an alternate street design?
That'd be on the neighborhood plan, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Counsel Richter on page 14.
Yeah, well, I wanted to pick up on that one, too, but from the point of view of the several letters that came through regarding protecting roadside trees, and I think 204A Street was one of the roads that was mentioned. Are we under any legal obligation to provide on-street parking? Like, shouldn't the developers provide enough parking in their developments that on-street parking isn't necessary?
Your Worship, typically, that's what is being done. The zoning bylaw provides for the typical use in terms of the parking requirements of a particular parcel based on its permitted use. However, the street parking is often required to accommodate extraordinary uses, such as parties and gatherings and social activities, et cetera. That is the intent of on-street parking on local roads. Most collectors and arterials don't provide, and none of the arterials accommodate on-street parking. So it's something that is exclusive to local and residential streets. Again, it's only for extraordinary uses because on-street, sorry, off-street parking is a requirement of zoning bylaw based on the type of use.
Okay, and in order to avoid the parking problems we've had in Willoughby, are we increasing the amount of parking that's required higher than what we've been permitting in Willoughby?
Yes, I would say we have actually tried to improve the parking situation elsewhere in Willoughby as well. So for example, in the two plans, neighborhood plans that we adopted in Willoughby, namely Latimer and Smith, we've actually changed the parking requirements to reflect that. And part of the issues with parking in Willoughby has to do with an intended consequence of secondary suite. Because we just implemented the suite issue, the rezoning for allowing secondary suites, we were basically caught in a time period where we have to quickly rectify the situation by introducing special or new provisions in the new plans.
Yeah, but I don't think we should hold our breath that there won't be secondary suites throughout Brookswood, because there will be, there already are. So what are we requiring for parking now, and can we make it higher?
Well, in the zoning bylaw, we have actually, you know, included the parking consideration as part of the suite approval process. And also in the new plans, we're including provisions to address that particular issue.
Counsel Arneson, question?
Yes, thank you. This is also about parking. So I noted that it was one of the comments that came up. And so I'm wondering if at the OCP level, if we could consider sort of a reassessment, shall we say, of the overall parking situation. I'm specifically referring to the fact that Translate may or may not ever come sort of in a comprehensive way to the area. So I'm just wondering, would that be a neighborhood plan initiative as opposed to the OCP? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Can we move to page 15? Anything on page 15? Counsel Richter?
Yeah, we're at 6 o'clock. Can we adjourn?
No, we, our bylaw goes to 6:30. So we'd have to have a motion to council. But we, our bylaw allows us, after the meeting, to go to 6:30. And then we'd need a motion to extend. So we're moving through. We still have a few to go, maybe we can get through it. So 43 to, so Counsel Richter, any questions? Counsel Davis?
Yes, thank you. On the park size, it said here, two acres per 1,000 people?
Yes.
And we have roughly 100 acres?
Overall, in the township or in Brookswood Furnridge?
In Brookswood Furnridge.
That's the additional area that we would need in order to meet the requirements in the parks and recreation.
Oh, I'm, okay, okay. So we, the question is, do, is that something that's in, it said we will need, but is that something that's in here that will say we have to slowly accumulate as things go on? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move to page 16. Page 16. Oh, hey, Counsel Richter, I wanted to go back to, sorry, which slide?
I don't have a slide number.
It's the one on the screen, Your Worship.
It's number 14.
Number 40, yeah, that's number 45, yeah.
Okay. If we were to keep the 1987 plan, can we add protections into that plan for environment, like environmental protections?
That would be subject to another process, Your Worship, but it could be done, certainly. Would be a community plan amendment.
But that's what this is, an update to the 87 plan.
Certainly.
Add in those things. So we've gone through, that's exactly what we've just done, is to update.
Mr. Mayor, I was just asking, if the vote happens, that it goes down to defeat, can we salvage the 87 plan by adding in some environmental protections?
I'll be up to council.
And, Your Worship, it would be subject to a different process. I would submit that it would have to go through a separate process based on the information that council, the direction of council.
Okay, so now we're at page 16. And that's the, okay, so we've gone through the comparisons of 87 to 217. That's 46 to 48 slides. Any questions on those?
Oh, sorry, could you go back to the last one?
So if we just go back up to page, or slide number 46, 46, one down. There we go. So any, there's those three, that's three to three. Any questions on those? Counsel Arneson, sorry.
Oh, sorry, it's not that slide.
Okay, so are we moving on to page 17 then?
Yes.
Page 17, so this is slide number 49. Which slide, 49, 15, 51?
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. I did have a question regarding the language that's being used, and I wonder if we could kind of tighten it up, because I know that the OCP does talk about the protection of the aquifer. But I'm wondering if we could be more specific and to invoke certain terms that are in use now, such as onsite low-impact development, making that mandatory. So bio swales and infiltration gardens, those would have to be adopted.
Your Worship, yes, I believe the response is that it could be done, but it's usually part of the neighborhood planning process. We do have some language in the current community plan in front of council that talks about low-impact developments. But anything beyond that, we suggest should be done at the neighborhood planning level. I'm looking at the comments that were provided by Counsel Arneson, and looking at the comments from staff. And I was just advised by Mr. Nelson that one of the policies under section 6.1 talks about the low-impact development and following best management practices.
Okay, and just another comment, I think it's related to that, just about the protection of the aquifer. And looking after scarce resources, could we put in the language something about technologies for water conservation? Is that currently contained within the language?
Again, Your Worship, that is something that is perhaps best addressed independently of a community plan, because that's something that we would like to have all of our township residents. And I, I think we do have two, at least two other higher-level documents, the Water Resources Management Plan and the Water Management Strategy that talks about water conservation.
Okay, I'm going to go too far, so I'll stop now.
Counsel Richter?
I just wanted to ask with regards to stormwater management, is the plan being set up to handle 200 to 500-year events?
Your Worship, the plan, the community plan does not in itself do that. That's something that other documents, such as the Township Subdivision Development Servicing bylaw, the Master Transportation Plan, the Integrated Stormwater Management Plan, Integrated Stormwater Management Plan, and subsequent neighborhood planning processes, which will include stormwater management plans, Engineering Services Plan, will be able to address.
Yeah, I guess my concern here is that conference I was at, which is basically saying we're going to have more severe weather events, and removing all those trees down there isn't going to help matters. So I think we need to have stormwater management for, as they say, 200 to 500 years.
They will be done as part of neighborhood plans.
Yeah.
Counsel Fox?
Yeah, just quickly, impervious driveways, that sort of thing, that comes in the neighborhood plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so move to page 18. Anything on page 18? The slides we're looking at there, 52 through 54, okay, see nothing there. Move to page 19. Page 19, Counsel Long?
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just wondering, slightly on page 18, we have designations, of course, a little old, we can't say where they are for school districts and so forth. Whereabouts is daycare facilities? Just out of curiosity, in any neighborhood plan, where would they be allowed? Institutional?
There would be institutional uses. Monsieur, do you want to elaborate on that?
Because we don't, do we have in any of our other neighborhood plans a designated spot for daycare? Because I know that we had an issue with application years ago.
So, yeah, and for 10 of the proposed plan, our institutional consider new community facilities, including daycares, senior centers, places of worship in any land use designation, except for single-family two area north of 36th Avenue on the east side of 200th and 33A on the west side of 200th, subject to the site being located on a collector road as opposed to local road, site having access to adequate transportation network for the proposed size of the facility, site having adequate off-street parking and/or drop-off and pickup space, and proposed development being consistent with the form, scale, and character of adjacent land uses.
Super, so it's well addressed in it. Thank you. Hey, Counsel Richter, page 19?
I wanted to talk about the DCCs. Can we dedicate the DCCs raised in Brookswood to be solely spent in Brookswood?
Your Worship, as mentioned during the presentation, this is something that could be done, but it requires holistic realignment of our DCC program.
Okay.
Restructuring of the DCC program, such as that it's community-based and not township-wide based.
And will we raise enough out of DCCs to support what's going into Brookswood Furnridge?
Typically, as part of a neighborhood planning process, the infrastructure, the servicing needs are then taken into account and costed out, and the DCC revenues being projected are costed out, and a financial section is provided as part of each neighborhood plan.
Okay. And can we implement a DCC for things like schools or hospitals?
No.
Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, on number 23 here, on height of buildings, can, is it, could you just remind me of what's in the plan for restrictions on height of buildings in Brookswood Furnridge?
Two and a half stories for rowhouse townhouses, and four stories max for apartment buildings and mixed-use buildings.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Fox?
Yeah, but we have a school, every door that's built has a school fee attached to it, right?
That's correct, but it's not a DCC. That's a school site acquisition charge.
Right, which we collect.
That's passed on to the school district.
And pass on to the school district. So, I mean, I don't know if there's 1,000, 2,000, 5,000 houses or whatever doors being built, that times that school acquisition fee.
That's correct.
Would go to the school district.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, page number, looks like we went through 19, number 20, anything on number 20? Energy, seniors housing, agriculture land, nothing on 20. Okay. Now we move into 21, which I think would take us into debate regarding amendments. So we've moved to 22, and there is, we, members of council, unless somebody has questions on clarity on anything on the staff recommendation. However, we go to, there's that slide which is highlighted with yellow where there's, I know, members of council had submitted. And so if there's any questions on those, that would take us to page 22 and 23. Okay, Counsel Fox?
Go back one. Restrict lot coverage to preclude an expansion of McMansions, which detract from the overall objectives of the plan. So there's a zoning bylaw provision, that's what you've written there. And is the zoning bylaw provision 35% lot coverage right now?
For single-family with, that's correct, right? Yeah, 35% is in the zoning bylaw currently.
And that's consistent across the whole township?
For that parcel size, yes.
For that, so it's related to parcel size?
It's related to zone, the specific zone.
And so what you would see is that zoning provision being in place in this particular. So that's consistent with what I would say, Brookswood north of 36th and 33A, correct?
Correct. Just to clarify, Your Worship, the comment from staff, zoning bylaw provision, what is intended by that is that if council wanted to restrict the housing, the building of homes larger than the 35%, it would take an act of council to amend the zoning bylaw as opposed to have something in the community plan to limit the size of homes. It is not a community plan provision, but rather a zoning bylaw provision.
So that piece of, that question then precludes the OCP and has to go to the revised zoning bylaw revision. So 35% is consistent across Brookswood and Brookswood Furnridge. That would be consistent, okay. I guess the concern comes from the fact that there's people buying lots in Brookswood, knocking the house down, putting up a bigger house. And, but they're still at the 35% lot coverage. I know one at the corner of 42nd and, not 42nd, 43rd and 204th, evoked a lot of public sentiment. Because it's on a corner, it looked even bigger because of the nature of the corner, of the configuration of the house, but it was still 35%, which, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Oh, that's good.
Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you. And further to that, so does that just include the house footprint, or is that the outbuildings or accessory buildings as well that's covered under the 35% lot coverage?
That includes, includes, yes.
The whole built structures?
Coverage on the entire parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Building coverage.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that leads us right to the discussion pages and some maps. Any further questions of council to staff regarding the presentation? I don't see anything there, so I want to thank you very much for helping us work through this and clarifying a lot of the points that have been raised. That's later, but we do appreciate it. So at this point, would require a motion to terminate.
Terminate.
Counsel Whitmarsh moves termination. Counsel Davis seconds it. All those in favor, opposed to carry. Thank you.